This time, I'd like to go ahead and call to attention or to order the meeting of the Ascension Parish Planning Commission. Before we get started, there's a few announcements I'd like to make. If anyone has a cellphone, please turn it off. Unfortunately, it interferes with the audio that we now have available to us. Time was when we could put it on silent, it was all right. That's not the case anymore. Also at this time, I'd like to announce that Mr. Clint King has resigned from the Ascension Parish Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd like to thank, publicly thank, Mr. King for his service to the commission and the parish. We have several items that have been pulled from our agenda. Item 6A, the Adam Pierre Parro estate, 6A through 6D, as a family partition, has been pulled. Also, item 8B, Old Dutch Town Third filing, has been pulled. We will not be discussing these items of business in this meeting this evening. For those of you in the audience who are here for the zoning commission meeting, which will follow this meeting, two items have been pulled from that agenda also. Item 5A, zoning review ID 1452.06, tract B of the LeBlanc White Plantation for Stephen Scallan, and item 5B, zoning review ID 1453.06, tract B of the LeBlanc White Plantation for Stephen Scallan. Those two items have been pulled from our agenda, so we won't be discussing those items later on this evening. Let the record show that all commissioners are present, with the exception of Mr. Stephen At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak on any agenda item that is not up for public hearing, please come up. Angie, Stephen Barrow has just arrived. Make a note of that, please. Any item that is not up for public hearing, you wish to speak on it, please come up, sign in with the parish secretary here at the front. And he'll get you three minutes. No one wishing to speak during the public comment period? Item four on our agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the March 8, 2006 meeting. Have a motion to approve by Julio Barrow, seconded by Steve Courtwright. Is there any opposition?
That'd be Scott Courtwright.
I'm sorry.
Steve Barrow.
Scott Courtwright. Motion passes. Item five, acceptance of the simple division of property approved by the planning commission chairman from March 1, 2006 to March 31, 2006.
Make a motion to approve?
I have a motion by Mike Bardwell to approve.
Second?
Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any objection? Motion passes. We'll jump to the items under number seven, public hearing for granting preliminary approval to the following subdivisions. Item 7A, East Creek Villas.
My name is Craig Quarry with Monroe and Quarry. We're here to ask for preliminary approval for the East Creek Villas subdivision, which consists of 51 residential garden home lots and three large commercial tracts on the corner. We have responded to all the comments from the engineering review agency and respectfully request your approval.
Are there any comments or questions from the commissioners at this time? Sean, I've got a question I'd kind of like to start things off with. More thought should be given to drive access to Germany Road and LA 44 for the commercial tracks.
Yeah, we are, right now, we're limiting it, what we have on the plat is to limit it to one driveway access for tract A, two driveway accesses for tract B, one on each highway, and one for tract C. We feel that that's adequate. I mean, it's a, on Germany Road, you've got 667 feet, and we only have two driveways in that 676 feet. And then on 44, we've got 585 feet, we'll have two driveways also.
Are you going to put in a landscape buffer for lots 151, 38, and 37 along Germany Road?
Yes.
You know any details about the landscape buffer?
We don't have any details at this point.
Is it going to be, is it going to be part of that lot, or is it going to be a separate landscape tract?
It'll be part of the lot.
Who's going to be responsible for it?
We'll probably make that part of the homeowners association.
Are you going to deal with them accessing someone's private property?
It'll be in a landscape servitude. It'll be dedicated on the final plat.
We've talked about this before at other subdivisions, and since I've been on the board, it's, this speaks to my interest. Landscaping is not just a cookie cutter idea that we can throw out there and put crepe myrtles, hollies, or Bradford pears, things that are very easy to find, they're very low in expense, but what we'd like to see, as me, as part of the commission, I'd like to see some plants that are more native, work better in the situation. If you put something in and you were going to require the residents to keep up with it, we want to do something that's low maintenance. So with those plants that I just mentioned, you're going to have some disease and insect problems, and you're going to have a higher maintenance situation, thus costing them more money down the road.
Okay.
So when you do your selection, and I'd be happy to review that, you don't have to come back to the full commission, I'd be happy to look at that with you.
Sure.
But we want to pick plants that are conducive to growing in South Louisiana and conducive to being a low maintenance plant in a low maintenance situation.
Sure, and we'd be glad to let you look at that before we, when we prepare the construction plan.
Appreciate that. I have a question for you also, number 12, green spaces, common area green spaces, recreational spaces?
Yeah, we've looked at that, and basically, we've decided we can give up lot 10 and let that be the green space, because that's where the sewer treatment plant's going to be. It also allow for access, they could get to the, you'll have about 30 something feet along the top of Black Bayou, that will be green area there too, between the top bank and the rear of those lots.
So I'm sure you'll do some landscaping enhancement around lot 10, where the sewer treatment, our sanitary treatment facility is to kind of mask that?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. And we'll see that on the final plat?
I'm not sure if we'll show it on the final plat or in the construction plans, but we'll have it on something that's...
I may just want to tie that in with 151, 38, and 37 as your landscape plan?
Okay.
To buffer that whole.
Sure.
Nobody wants to see that in their backyard, but it's a necessary evil.
Sure, right.
You've checked lot 45, where your standard unit will fit without meeting a variance?
Lot 45? Say that again?
Lot 45, have you verified that your, your basic unit is going to fit in that lot?
Yes, yes.
Any other comments or questions from the commission at this time?
Flood information, I do have another question. The flood information you have from the FEMA maps, January 20, 1993, those flood maps have just been preliminary out. Have you taken a look at those versus where you're at now?
Yeah, we've actually got shaded on here what the new map shows. So we're coming up to, I think, elevation 15 now with the flood.
Okay. I know that's a hot topic for everybody.
Right.
There are no other questions or comments from the commission, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on this property. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item, please come up, sign in with No one wishing to speak? One more time, gentlemen, comments or questions from the commission?
I do have another question for your comment, rather. The wetlands determination you submitted, when was that submitted?
That was submitted for this whole property back when we did the West Creek Estates. And we submitted that, and we still haven't received a reply back from the Corps, but it was back probably in December of last year.
It's a quagmire right now at the Corps, so it's going to take quite a bit longer than what it used to take.
Sure.
And so you're, I'm assuming that your survey showed that lots 1 through probably 10 or 11 are in a wet situation?
No, if I recall, there wasn't any wetlands
No wetlands.
On this area right here at all.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right.
If there are no other comments or questions from the commission, what's the wish of the commission?
I'd like to see the, that green space and that landscape buffer on the plat before we approve it.
I'd like to take it a step further, not only see the area, but I'd like to see the plans, the details, we call it the planting details, so it'll tell us what's going to be in that plan. So if we get with the landscape architect, they'll draw that up and say, these are the plans we recommend.
See, I want to see that before we get approval.
You wanted to make a motion to defer?
I would make a motion to defer until the, until next month, so the petitioner can show the lot 10 converted to a green space, and I'm assuming you're going to renumber the lots.
Sure.
And the landscape servitude along Germany Road, and Scott, preliminary landscape plan of what that buffer's going to look like.
Correct, yeah, planting detail.
I have a motion to defer by Julio Dumas. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any objections? Item 7B, Pelican Crossing, second filing.
I'm Mickey Robertson with SJB Group. I'm here tonight representing Pelican Crossing LLC, and we're here to present the second filing of Pelican Crossing subdivision. The subject property is about 98 acres, and we are proposing 210 lots, roughly about two lots per acre on the development. We have addressed all the comments by the engineering review agency. We've had a couple of meetings with the homeowners association, and I think they have a representative here tonight that would like to speak as well. And other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, on the, on the original plat, there was 204 lots, and this is significantly increasing the number of lots in the second filing. Can you explain that?
Sure. Actually, in the, I think there were 204, including the first filing, so there's roughly about 45 in the first filing, and we're proposing an additional 210 here. Previously, before the zoning regulations, that development came through as an open ditch subdivision with 60-foot rightaways and a 20-foot asphalt street. And now, we're going with concrete curb and gutter streets, and the minimum requirements were 70 by 150 for that. So basically, we're going to concrete curb and gutter streets, is the difference between the density there. So that's why we're, have more lots than it previously had.
The thing that I have a problem with on this, right off the bat, is that in the first filing, people that bought residences in that first filing were presented a conceptual plan of a subdivision with a certain lot size. The thing that I have an issue with at this point is, is the second filing is significantly smaller lot sizes, density's way up. I'd just like to hear a little more reasoning on why, you know, the commission should grant a revised plan on that subdivision.
Well, actually, we've had three or four meetings with the adjacent homeowners group, and they are here tonight. I'd like for you to hear from them, if you don't mind, before we move forward with that, if that's okay.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah, I've got one more. You're showing a proposed common area tract by lot 120.
Yes, sir.
That was originally a stubout for adjacent land, correct?
Yes, sir.
What's the reasoning for taking the stubout?
Well, in our original plan, if you can, I can go up here and pull it.
Is there any area right here?
Actually, it's about lot 120.
Yeah, yeah, I'm getting back there. Originally, in our plan, we did not have that connection to River Ridge. When we went to the pre-application meeting, they asked us to, they said we had to have a connection over there, so we moved that stubout from, from where it was at between 20 and, 120 and 23, over to the connection in the new River Ridge subdivision. That's where that stubout went. We're actually, we're presently showing four connections to the adjacent property. We actually have one connection to 44, one to Pelican Crossing Drive, and then two to adjacent neighborhoods, existing streets.
So you're basically saying that you moved that stubout from that location
Yes, sir.
To tie in to Remington Drive?
Yes, sir.
That's all for now.
Thank you.
I have one, one question. Where is the oxidation pond?
The, there's an existing oxidation pond that presently services Pelican Crossing first filing.
It is.
It's adjacent to Hackett Canal, and that's, that's where its outfall is at.
Any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
Did you guys do a wetlands delineation here?
Yes, yes.
What were the results of that?
The only thing that was claimed as wetlands is there is a ditch.
That runs along the west boundary, consider other waters.
Was it jurisdictional wetlands under the Corps?
Yes, sir.
Did you have to do anything for coastal use permits, since we're in the coastal zone?
No, we have not done anything for coastal use permits in our...
Are you, what impacts you're going to have to that waterway, to the ditch?
To the, that ditch on the west property lot, we are going to be cleaning that out, so we will have to get a section 10. I think it's just section 10, because it's other waters.
And I'm sure you'll have soil brought in, and I'm sure you'll do filling and earthwork and that sort of thing to put foundations down?
Actually, we won't have any soil brought in. We're digging a 16-acre lake, like you see there, 16 acres, so...
You'll have exposed soil on your property?
Right. So we'll have to have a stormwater pollution prevention plan and file an NOI with DQ and follow those.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Michael, on your comments dealing with the drainage outfall from the detention ponds, you talked about the flap gate design. Correct me if I'm wrong, if you're using a flap gate design, that would typically mean that the water surface, the outlet pipe would be lower than the typical water surface that they, that it's discharging to?
Well, at this point, I think they have successfully given us models showing that they're not going to use the flap gates anymore, so I think that's a moot point.
Right, correct.
So that, they're totally away from the flap gate design?
Totally eliminated it.
Any other questions or comments? Now, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing of this item. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary.
Hi, my name is Tommy Temple. I'm an employee of Oremet Corporation, and I have a concern, and I'm also in search of information regarding the actual layout of the proposed subdivision. My concern is that there is a, you know, there's development underway in this general area. It may be this subdivision, it may be another one that's in the process of being permitted. It would appear that lots are being planned to be built and sold at a very close location to the Oremet spent box site, storage site, which gives me a great deal of concern for safety of the future Ascension Parish residents who may buy some of this property. And my comment to you is I would urge the planning commission to consider the location of that industrial solid waste facility in any consideration for allowing home sites to be sold in locations that are very close to that facility. The facility is a permitted industrial solid waste site. It contains chemicals that need to be contained. If there's a, an accident or something that causes a breach of those levees, then I would be concerned about anyone who lives in that vicinity. And I'm urging, I'm urging you to consider that in the approval of not only this subdivision, but any other subdivision that's developed in that, in that area. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Paul Harvey.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Paul Harvey. I am my owner in the Pelican Crossing subdivision. We did have one formal meeting with the developer, and that was Friday evening, the 7th. This was the first formal meeting we did have with these folks. I know they went around the neighborhood door to door, but this is by invitation only. During the meeting, we asked for several items. One of them was create green space around the lake for the whole neighborhood to be able to enjoy. We initially asked for lots 211 through 214. They did come back and propose near lot 256, where I guess he called the stubout is. They did come back and say they would create green space there. Also, during our conversation with these gentlemen, we had talked about the lot size reduction, which Mike, you had spoke on earlier. Appreciate that. Another item we had asked for is possibly installing fire hydrants within the first phase. We do not have them now. I know the new development will have them. If there's anything that can be done to get his hydrants in there, it would be appreciated. Last thing is the connection that would connect River Ridge to Pelican Crossing. We would ask you guys to reconsider that due to safety reasons, higher traffic flow through the neighborhood, and possibly the property values being decreased. And that's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
No one else? Comments, questions from the commission?
Getting back to the lot sizes, is the developer willing to look at and reconsider the lot sizes that join the first filing, to make those lots the same size as the lots that are in the first filing? So in regards to them, I'm actually talking about lots 121 through 160.
When, well, one thing that Mr. Harvey didn't mention was that when we did have the meetings with them, they asked about the lot sizes. We explained to them that we were, you know, building a much nicer development with sidewalks and concrete curb and gutter, much nicer homes, minimum square footage of 1,800 square feet, so we're talking 225 to, you know, and up, $1,000 homes. And they seemed to be very supportive of what we were trying to, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, Mr. Harvey, but very supportive of the product and the development that we were doing there. When the original subdivision came through, one of the stipulations that was put on that approval was that the lots that back up to Clark Plantation subdivision be a minimum of 100 feet by 200 feet. We have maintained that level on the western side over there, and so we feel like, you know, we've made, certainly made that, kept that consistent as part of that, as was part of that original approval. And as Mr. Harvey said, they did request that they be able to access the lake. So what we agreed to do was the little finger of the lake that comes out to the street down on the west side, was that we would convert that into some kind of park area or, you know, some kind of public access area, so that they could come into this neighborhood, walk on the sidewalks, ride bikes, you know, get to the park area, and have access to the lake. The other item he mentioned was the fire hydrants. In lieu of getting into their subdivision and tearing up their streets and their yards and everything, one thing we agreed to look at was the possibility of, at the two connections to their subdivision, on the north end, where we're connecting perpendicular into their subdivision, providing a fire hydrant there, and then on the south end of their development, where we're extending their street, providing another fire hydrant in that area. May not provide total coverage for their whole neighborhood, but it certainly is an improvement on what they have today. But those were some of the concessions that we talked to about the, you know, with them in their meeting. In terms of the connection, we explained to them that our original, in our original layout, we were not connecting to River Ridge, you know, for those very same reasons that they brought up. We'd be more than happy to take that connection and move it back over there to in between lots 120 and 23, and not have the connection into River Ridge. That's certainly something that you folks could, you know, require us to do tonight, and we'd be happy to do that. I think that addresses most of the things we heard.
Julio, you had a question?
You know, I just want to point out to you that if you redid 121 through 138, which is 18 lots, just so that they would be consistent with those homes, you know, we're talking about five lots out of those 18 lots, you know, and you've got a total of 200 and how many lots here?
10. 210.
210. I just think you need to worry about the consistency with those adjoining property owners a little bit more. Michael, there's a question for you. This intersection in Toledo Avenue and Cusada Drive, seems like an awful, I don't know how to describe it, funky corner?
It doesn't necessarily bother me. I mean, he's, he's curbing the road to come in radial to the curb on Cusada Drive, so, I mean, it's, it's a stop condition as they're coming down Toledo Avenue.
Okay.
We'd like to point out that, you know, all these lots do meet the requirements of the zoning for this development, you know, the minimum of 70 feet of width and 10,500 square feet.
Did you, did you state that there was going to be sidewalks around that, that lake?
No, sir. Sidewalks in the development, in the, inside the right of way.
And when you spoke to the residents, they were not asking to put an entrance to that lake around lots 212 to 217 in that area? I mean, why, why would you look at giving up, I mean, if you've got public access, well, other, other residents in the subdivision have... other, other residents in the subdivision have access on that by lots 256 and 192, you don't have anything up in that region. Is that something that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard the residents, you know, speaking to y'all about possibly doing that same thing on the, you know, around lots 212 to 216 in that area? I mean, you would be given the same whether you gave it one place or another.
Sure, you mean moving it from there, up there, or doing two?
I mean, it's...
We could do something, we could do something on the east side of the lake over there.
That's what I thought I understood I'm saying. Why would we, but then it came back and it was proposed on 256. I'm trying to understand that.
They really didn't say any specific areas when we talked about it the first time. They didn't say we had to have it right here. They really were just wanted to know if they could get to the lake to be able to enjoy fishing or, you know, some kind of green space. So, that was a logical place for us to be able to incorporate some green space there. Let's let that little stubout. We'd be happy to look at the east side of the lake and see if we can make some adjustments over there to get some green space from Pelican Crossing Drive out to the lake. We can, we can certainly put that as a condition on the development.
I'm gonna stay infirm on the adjoining lots myself to the second filing, those being the same size as the, as the lots in the first filing. And Julio mentioned 121 through 138. I'd like to take that and at least add 158 through 160, or 157 through 160. I think at a minimum, the, the adjoining lots in that second filing should be the same size.
Even though these do meet the requirements.
That's, that's the thing. You, you are coming back to present a change to something that was already approved.
Actually, we had to redo the whole, you know, the whole development was redone. I mean, they didn't have a 16 acre lake in that one either. You know, it's something that we, you know, have provided in this one that's different than that original design that was there.
Any comments or questions from the commission?
Do you have the original design with you? Or does it rest in the Oremet Commission?
I do not have a copy.
Charles, did you bring a copy of the, the original plaque for us? That's... One of the, the things that I, Charles, didn't we, when we approved River Ridge, didn't we base our approval on, because we had some changes made to River Ridge, and weren't those changes in reference to this? Just wondering how that's going to change up?
You see, River Ridge had to provide that stubout to conform with the, with the layout of Pelican Crossing.
I would like to mention one other improvement that we're making to help out Pelican Crossing first filing. In the previous to our development, there was about 47 acres of property here that drained into this small pond. And so, in, in any kind of rain, and these folks experienced making water in the water in their street, after our development, we're taking everything except for half of their road and this western half of their street is all that's gonna go into their lake. Taking the additional 35 acres and putting it into our lake and now following it this way. So, we are drastically improving their drainage situation as well. That is something that, that certainly, you know, largely affected the size of our lake. You know, in the previous development, I think they had a six or seven acre lake in there. Like I said before, we have 16 acres here.
But you're also adding more concrete, which is more impervious surface. So, you've got more sheet flow. So, good half of an argument, but there's a lot more capacity.
That certainly contributes to it, but there is also, you know, quite a bit of area that we're taking out of their pond to help their situation out.
Yeah, but the issue, the real issue here is that this is all part of Pelican Crossing. There were the first filing, it was a portion of one, one development.
Sure.
And this is the second. And I think, you know...
We also have had discussions with them about incorporating their filing into our homeowners' association because we will have a legally functioning homeowners' association. Right now, theirs is based on a volunteer basis only. So, you know, I mean, our discussions with them went, they were a little more in-depth than just one formal meeting, you know. It was, it was a lengthy meeting, and we did talk quite a bit about what's gonna, what was gonna be going on in our development and what's going on in their development. And I really felt like we had their support, you know, for what we're doing. A nod there, but just want to point that out, that they're, you know, they're okay with what we're doing. I just...
I think they like your curb and gutter approach. They like that, if I'm not speaking for you, Paul. They like that approach?
Yes, absolutely. They like the fact that we had...
One thing that concerns me, being on this commission, what I'm charged with and what we're all charged with is it's not about us today, but it's about the people that are gonna purchase our homes and our property after we're dead and gone, our children or whatever. And what we want to do is in first filing, second filing, is merge those two things together and have some consistency, the lots to be the same size and for it to look seamless. That's, that's the goal. So, I, I think that's kinda what the commission's saying tonight, is that we'd like to see some of that be amended so it matches.
And I think from a, you know, property value standpoint that it is, you know, that we're gonna be helping that situation out, but certainly, you know, the way we see it, and I, the people who are affected the most by it are here tonight to tell you that, you know, they like what we're doing. So, I think that, you know, certainly carries some weight, you know, that they're here.
Well, either way, either way it goes, if it's approved, they have a preliminary. If we don't approve this, they still have a preliminary. They can still develop.
That's correct.
Which do you consider to be the most consistent with what you, what's been presented to you? My concern is that we approved an adjacent subdivision on, and had them change, make changes based on this preliminary approval.
And we're consistent with those.
What are we going to do? We're gonna have the owner of, the developer of River Ridge come in and say, hey, I wanna go ahead and change up because they've changed. We'll go ahead and we'll have more lots in River Ridge too.
I would like to address that we did, we are matching up with their layout. We are not varying from, we are connecting to the connection that you forced them to make. And that is what Remington Avenue is. We are connecting, and their lots, I think, are, you know, meet the minimum requirements of medium, medium density residential as well. They don't, I don't think they have, you know, 100 by 150 lots in there. I think they, we're certainly, I think we're more consistent with lot sizes in their development than this other one, but...
Let me ask you a question. You, you say that you've talked to the neighborhoods about the possibility of including them in, in your homeowners' association, and, and you've talked about the possibility of, of putting a couple of fire hydrants or anything like that. I mean, have you actually entered into any form of an agreement or at least documented those, those commitments to that community in any way?
Well, at this point, we don't have a development to commit with, you know. Certainly, that can be part of the approval, is that we negotiate with these folks to take care of their concerns with the fire hydrants if it, you know, if the best we can do is, you know, fire hydrants at each end. From a legal standpoint, including them into our homeowners' group is not as easy as just one or two people, you know. There are some legal ramifications in order to do that, but, you know, we're more than happy to work with them and see how we can make that work. Because, you know, there is a genuine interest in this being a total community that, that works well together. There is a genuine interest in that.
Well, this is my personal opinion, but I, you know, what I see here is, is a substantial change from the original approval. I, I think that you need to somehow or another address the sudden change in lot and may, and come up with a transition of some sort so that it buffers those existing lots. And that's my, that's my personal opinion and comment.
And I think I'll piggyback on what Julio said a minute ago. This is a conceptual plan or drawing, and there is no, I understand what you said, but you could've come to us with a conceptual idea of, yeah, we would like to put in, this is what we've been talking about, capture the minutes of that meeting perhaps and say, these are the items we've discussed, here's what we're thinking. And, and right now, it's just kind of a hearsay for us. We, we have no reason to believe or disbelieve either what went on.
I guess maybe the only change we could've made was show a, a green area there, you know, as far as the items we've discussed.
Well, I think what Julio is looking for is the same thing I'd be looking for. Julio, correct me if I'm wrong, is, is capturing your, your discussion with the homeowners' association.
Scott, you're correct. I mean, those are substantial commitments to the homeowners, and if they're willing to accept those commitments, you know, to address those, that transition in use in lot size, that's their personal decision. But, you know, I still have the issue of, of the transition, and I either wanna see it on the plans or I wanna see some, something binding between them.
By something binding, do you mean, you know, is there some kind of agreement that we can, that can be made a part of our approval?
Is that a commitment between the two of you or that could be incorporated into the record that says that you both agreed to do the filing?
I, I think that could certainly be the, made part of an approval, is that, you know, contingent approval is common. I think that contingent upon, you know, working out items A, B, and C with the adjacent folks.
I'm gonna have to defer to counsel, but I, I would, I would be very hesitant to give an approval conditional on, on, on something that we haven't seen, you know, because you could spend hours and months, you know, debating on the language in an agreement like that, and we'd have, we, we're not party to it in any way. So, I wouldn't...
Yeah, it would be, you know, I think it'd be in agreement with the, the folks who are affected the most by it, so, you know, I don't see why we, it couldn't be...
I have to add that we, we have nothing tangible to look at. I mean, if, if it's deemed that a transition needs to occur there, we're, we're not looking at a plaque with that transition on it right now. We've heard a lot already tonight as far as back and forth. I, I've heard some conflicting stories about the, how many meetings have taken place. You know, I had, I had somebody come up and say there was one pertinent meeting Friday.
Actually, he said we had one pertinent meeting, and we went door to door and talked to a lot of other folks.
Yeah, I heard that too.
Okay, that's what, and that's what I said, that we had same thing. It was nothing. I, I didn't mean for that to come off as conflictual. What I was referring to when I said we had more than one meeting was that we went door to door and we had one formal meeting.
One other comment?
Excuse me, sir. We, we'd like to try and handle the business of this meeting if we could, please? Thank you.
In regards to the oxidation ponds, was there any, y'all were aware of the comment to upgrade aerators?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions from the commission at this time? No other comments or questions? What's the wish of the commission? No?
That was it?
I move that we defer this to give the developer time to get with the, the residents in the first filing again and, and prove to us, I mean, if they are not wanting a transition area, I think it's only fair because they're in that first filing. At least for the lots that, that are adjoining to that first filing, that we, we know for a fact that the residents are okay with transitions. If they're not, then I'd like to see you revise this plaque to, to go ahead and incorporate those same lot sizes on that joint.
Can we ask them to come up and speak on that? That, you know, that's why they're here, that's why I...
I don't think it's, I don't think it's, I, I don't deem it appropriate at this time. That's, you don't have every resident that's alone at adjoining properties here tonight. Am I, am I right or wrong?
Mr. Harvey, about how many people did we have at the meeting on Friday? About 25 of the residents?
Twenty-five, I have 40 residents.
Actually, uh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna allow it tonight because right now, everybody tonight has kinda had their say. It's time for the commission to go ahead and do their thing.
Couldn't he be recognized by someone if they wanted to hear from him?
If a commissioner wants to recognize him, that's allowable.
Who is this?
Mr. Harvey, he's the president of the homeowners' group there in Pelican Crossing.
We, we had public comment period, that's the, and I'm not trying to be, I mean, this, this is, this is the way our meetings run. I mean, we had a public comment period. I feel like the residents in that first filing need that opportunity to state in writing one way or another whether they're happy with this transition or not. I think that's only fair to the people that were in here. They were presented with a conceptual plan whenever they bought into here. To change it midstream, I would want some assurance from those residents that they're okay with this in the form of, of, in writing stating whether they are okay with the transition or not, and then we'll go from there. That's my motion.
Can I speak to it?
I have a motion to defer by Mike Bardwell.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition? Motion passes. Item 7C, Acadiana of Ascension.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Wood Smith, and this project's located on Babbin Road, and we're requesting to subdivide approximately 25 lots into, I mean, 25 acres into 69 lots. Have a very nice lake in the middle stocked with bass and brim, and we also might install a fountain as well as pretty landscaping native plants around the common area of the lake. In addition, we'll have green space and a common area at the end of the cul-de-sac, which could be utilized by the neighborhood kids. We have curb and gutter streets with underground utilities. We've met all the parish guidelines, addressed all the comments, and we're not requesting any waivers. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions from the commission?
When I looked at this property, and I've got a couple of things, a couple of comments. There's a, there's an old oak tree in the center of the property. Are y'all proposing saving that, or is it ending up?
Right now, best of my ability to survey and walk it off. It fits right on the front of a lot, and I'm a tree hugger kinda developer, so I plan on keeping it if at all possible. Now, the thing, we're gonna have to do a little trimming because it's almost 90 feet wide, meaning if it, if it's 210 to 215 feet from the property line, we got 150 foot lot, we got a 50 foot right of way, that puts it 10 feet onto the next lot, which, if I have to, I may have to come back and ask for a waiver in the future to make the lot 140 on the other side to give me 10 more feet. Because if you, if you have this tree right here and the road right here, that tree has 45 feet going this way, there's only 27 feet width of the road. So, it will cover the whole road on one side and also go a ways back. So, we're gonna have to trim it a little bit, you know, to get under it. But yes, it's a beautiful tree, and it'd be sad to cut it down if we didn't, if we can avoid it, we don't wanna cut it down.
Have you consulted with an arborist?
No, sir, I have not.
Do you like the name of a good arborist to consult with?
Uh, that'll be fine. I'd be glad to get...
Scott Courtwright.
Okay.
Concerns me, I, I like to hear that you're, that you like trees. Cracks me up that you say tree hugger yourself, but that's funny. The thing that's interesting about saving a tree, and I'm gonna get on my soapbox real quick, and I'm gonna jump off real quick. You can't only worry about what you see above the ground. Trees are a phenomenal organism. This tree is very old, I've seen the tree myself. You gotta take the height into consideration, the roots go out one and a half times the height. Let's say the tree is a hundred feet tall, just to make things easy, it's gonna be a hundred-and-fifty feet from the center of the tree out for root system. So if we only look at the surface, the ground surface, and we want to trim some limbs, we want to put roads by it, we want to put houses by it, we're only considering part of the functionality of the tree, and that's what we can see. And that's the problem that many developers and people make that aren't trained to look at this stuff, is that we only look at the top portion of the tree, and we damage the root structure. So we can't only, we set up a tree preservation around that tree, we can't worry about the limbs only, we've got to worry about the complete root structure of the tree. If we do some trimming, we've also got to think about what we're gonna, what impacts we're gonna have to the roots, because they're directly related, the roots to the limbs. So when you set up a tree preservation, and you have the first step, a desire to preserve this tree, that's the first step to preserving a tree, you need to have somebody out there that can steer you in the right direction. Lots of times, people use that tree after the construction's done, now we want to do preservation. Construction needs to occur now. So that would be my advice to you. First thing also, before all of that, the tree needs to be evaluated to even see, even though it's large and it's, it may be beautiful, it could be overridden with vermicin termites, which Ascension Parish has a healthy dose of. So you could be wanting to save a tree, wanting to keep it, because it looks nice, however, there's problems with the tree. You may put a home next to it, or maybe over the road, you may have a limb failure, and then that's, that's a safety issue, and it could cost somebody their life or property loss. So you need to have the tree evaluated by a Louisiana licensed arborist, a, a professional consulting arborist, not just a tree guy, not a landscape architect, none of those folks know anything about that. It has to be an arborist, absolutely has to be. And if you want to keep the tree, and we've heard that tonight, you gotta take the steps to keep the tree.
Yes, sir.
Off my soapbox.
Well, I'm, for me, I've done this development business for a while, and it's hard to keep them and make them survive if you get the tractors anywhere near them.
Absolutely.
So you gotta start off with a piece of yellow tape, and, you know, just.
Chain link fence works really good.
Get, get away from the tree.
Absolutely.
And so, anyway, I'm certainly aware of what we need to try to do to save the tree, if in fact it's healthy.
I'm available tomorrow and all next week. If you want to call me, I'll be happy to come out there and look at you and help you put something together.
Okay, I'll take you up on that.
Bill Wood, I've got a comment, question. Etufay Avenue stubs out to the Anthony J. Bacala Senior Property, yet there is a road off of Highway six-twenty-one, Leon Babbin Senior Road, that I actually drove to the end of it, and I looked into your property. So I'm kind of curious about a stubout. Now, I see you've got Mr. Sledge with you. Wayne, if you want to come up and answer the question, or if you don't, I'll pick on Karen, that's, that's all right, too.
I'm gonna answer it.
You can answer it, Bill Wood?
Yes. Okay, well, in Ascension Parish, you have to be able to get a school bus and a fire truck to pass each other, therefore you need at least eighteen feet. Now, I'm gonna give you this scenario. Let's assume this property didn't front on Babbin Road, and it just tied into Leon Babbin Senior Drive, and I came to the commission for subdivision. I would probably get shot down by Michael Sanji and Mr. Becknell at our pre-app meeting because Leon Babbin Road is only sixteen feet wide. Okay? I drove back there yesterday, I found out afternoon that there was a, a street that tied into this project. I drove out there, I measured the street, I went to the end of the street, and it was sixteen feet wide. I wasn't aware that that street tied into this property until yesterday. We went to all of our subdivision meetings, and basically, no one ever dreamed of it, because I've got like the assessor's map here, it doesn't show it, we have an aerial photo, what it shows is just a line going straight through the property, as if the Leon Babbin Road continued all the way through, and I thought it was just a property line. So I'm sure that's what Mr. Sanji thought, as well as Becknell and everybody else, and we also had an aerial photograph at our pre-app meeting. And I almost took it upon myself today, but I didn't, because I didn't think it was necessary, because it's only sixteen feet wide, to get a fire truck and a school bus and try and head down that road, just to prove that it wasn't for the best health, safety, and welfare of the community. So I hope we don't have to go that way, because I think it could be an issue, because you know everybody's gonna want to go out straight to six-twenty-one, and it's a narrow road.
Well, I looked at the parish road list that I have.
I hope it's, I hope it's a different one than, I hope it's the same one Sledge has.
I'm, uh, I stepped it off. And I have access to Mr. Sledge's resources, so I kind of have to make do with what I'm able to get a hold of. But, uh, it showed, let's see if I can find it real quick here. I realize what you're talking about, sixteen foot wide is the act, the physical width, width of the road. How do you understand that?
Thirty-nine or forty-foot right-of-way.
That's, that's what I was looking at, it's a thirty-nine, forty-foot right-of-way, and as far as I know, Charles, unless I'm mistaken, that is a parish road. I don't know if it's slated for any, any work in the near future. Uh, I know it was kind of rough when I drove down it.
It was rough yesterday.
So... But, uh, having, you know, finding that out, I felt I did need to ask the question.
Yes, sir.
Comments, questions from the commission?
Especially in this area, I mean, that's one of the things that, you know, we keep getting pounded with is traffic issues, and, you know, this would provide a second entrance, and it would provide, you know, an outlet both off of Babbin and six-twenty-one. I think it's something we, we do need to look at, therefore a second entrance. Looking at a... I was just gonna say, looking at Babbin Road, you know, Babbin Road is, is pretty narrow itself. Is that anything that you would consider for easements out of that, that road onto Babbin?
From that road to six-twenty-one, you mean?
No, I'm talk, I'm back on Babbin Road right now. Talking about the, the width, you know, Babbin's a fairly narrow road also. I'm asking, would you consider easements along lots one?
Sixty-nine.
And sixty-nine, for easements out in two Babbin Road on the development?
You mean like a little turning lane? Yes, sir. But I don't want y'all to mess my flowers up.
Native landscape, I'm not worried about flowers.
But my landscape, whatever.
Are you gonna have a homeowners association?
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna provide any landscape buffer from Babbin along lots one and sixty-nine?
I am, yes, sir.
Are you gonna show that as a servitude, or how are you gonna handle that?
It's gonna, typically, I do it as a landscape servitude.
Okay. Any reason why you didn't connect Gumbo to Babbin?
Yes. Because I'm trying to give Mr. Campanelli some privacy. I've got to relocate his house at the time. You see those squares on the map?
Yes, sir.
Man, you see that corner with his name on it?
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna take those squares off the map and move his house to the corner, and I didn't think that it was right to buy his land, develop it, and put a highway next to him, or roadway.
Well, but you have track B, which is a common area, and if you went through, it would actually be a much wider track. So you would be giving him a substantial buffer, if, if that's an open space that you could landscape, and it would be considerably larger if you got rid of that cul-de-sac.
What would be larger?
Track B, the common area.
You mean if we just went straight through?
Correct, sir.
I was basically doing it just for, to keep the traffic away from him.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? At this time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing on this piece of property. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up, sign in with the secretary.
Good evening. Is there any?
Could you please state your name for us, sir?
My name's Ernest Espinoza. I live off of a, I live adjacent to this proposed subdivision property. I haven't seen a map, I'd like, is there any possible way that I can see a, a map of the subdivision, or proposed subdivision? Okay, I had a couple of questions, I guess for the developer, is there gonna be a...
Could you please, uh, make, give your comments to the commission?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm, first time trying this. Okay, the, I was just wondering, is there gonna be a, a privacy fence maybe put up opposed to, to the adjac, excuse me, the adjacent lots that are on the, I guess, between one and sixteen, and, and also thirty-eight down the sides, I guess, you'd call it. Do we know there's, are they proposed, or?
We'll go ahead after the public comment period, we're gonna let the developer have a chance to answer.
Okay.
And he'll go ahead and answer those questions at that time.
All right. The, I know you said, I don't know if I should address y'all, or, there's also five other oak trees that run through these, uh, down, I guess, I really can't tell on this map, but from one to sixteen, there's another tree line that holds another, uh, I think, if you give them five, there's five good-sized oak trees. I don't know what, how to base it on, you know, the years or whatever. I know you were talking about having someone, an arborist, come out there and look at those, I don't know if they plan to destroy those, or, or, I mean, I would like to save them. They are, one of the reasons I had bought, where I bought, I tried to buy some of that land from Mr. Babbin myself, was to incorporate those onto my property, but they weren't, you know, it wasn't to be. I was just wondering, is, or, I was just wondering about, are they all gonna be destroyed in order to put the homes in, or you gonna try and save as many as possible? My second question, which is, has nothing to do with that, is there's a, a certain drainage that runs right down the middle of the property, I'm guessing, between John Wright Babbin's property and Mr. Campanelli's property. Is that gonna stay? Or is there gonna, they gonna reroute that drainage? Is that, I mean, do we know?
There's a proposed detention pond, and, there's a proposed detention pond there.
Okay.
Where you're talking about?
Yeah, like I said, I wish I'd had time to look at this before, I haven't really...
It's called track C, that common area, that's a big pond that'll be there.
Oh, okay. And between, where's the, if, don't mind me asking, y'all have looked at this a little longer, the, the road that's supposed to go through, or proposed go through to six-twenty-one that we were just talking about?
Well, that's, that's not on the plat. He's got a stubout going to another piece of property. My question was, because I found out there was a road that actually did go to the back of his property, why he didn't go ahead and tie into that road?
To alleviate some of the traffic off of Babbin?
One of the, one of the problems that has been identified with, as far as the traffic problems in this parish, deals with connectivity, and it's not just connectivity between subdivisions, but it's also connectivity with existing roads. And that's, that was my question to the developer at the time.
If you look in the map that you were given, it's this little area that was just showing off to the left, that's track A, that's about where the road is.
Okay. So, we don't know what's, if that's gonna be a three-way or not? All right.
Did, has he proposed?
Excuse me, ma'am, did you sign in?
Yeah, I just...
Oh, excuse my wife.
Okay, I mean, I...
We were kinda...
Are you done?
Sure.
Good answer.
Could you state your name, please, ma'am?
Patricia Espinoza. I just wondered, on the, I saw that there were sixty-nine lots, and I just got the map as well, if there is a proposed minimum square footage for the homes, if they've proposed that, and within what are the minimum lot sizes? And as far as drainage, is there drainage considerations for the adjacent property? Like, where our water drains off, because we have a ditch, an open ditch that runs on the backside of our property, which will be evidently, when he talked about those oak trees being in someone's yard, or being a part of those lot sizes, that, so it would be our backyard and evidently some of their front yards, maybe, so I'm wondering about drainage from our property and their properties, how that's, because we're off a private road, and so I wondered, the parish responsibility versus our personal responsibility for that drainage?
In this subdivision, he's required, and has shown it on this plat, to grant a fifteen-foot drainage servitude across the back of all these lots.
And the back is?
In the back of the lots, which would be adjacent to your property.
Okay.
So there's a fifteen-foot drainage servitude that's, that's gonna be, is dedicated to the parish, for, for just that purpose right there.
Okay, because that part of our property stays pretty wet, and so I just didn't know with that extra cement and all of that, if it would become an issue, you know, what our responsibility would be, and if that was gonna change, so, just not having any knowledge of how subdivision things work, so. And then the question about the oak trees, will he have to make some concessions, or before approval is given, is he gonna have to show that he's going to do, are there rules that say whether they're gonna save those trees or not save the trees, or, no?
Usually, this is what we do in the meetings, I mean, if, if we, if, sometimes we do set contingencies, if, it just depends on how the meeting goes, that's what this meeting is all about.
Okay.
Whether, whether or not we set contingencies for approval, or defer or deny it.
Okay. I just...
Whether, I mean, it, it either goes with approval, with contingencies or without, deferral, or denial. That's, that's what the purpose of this whole meeting is, is to get that input from you, and, and, you know, have the residents get a chance to speak, we hear from the developer, and then that's what we actually, takes place in this meeting, is we, you know, based on the information that is gathered during the meeting, we'll come to a consensus.
Okay, all right. I just, I know how school meetings work, I don't know how these work, so, thanks. I don't know how these work, so thank you.
The drainage issue, as far as that goes, just to answer another question for you, that, that pond that he's creating there? He's creating that in theory to absorb, offset, so there will be a zero impact from homes that he's building. So that pond will capture water. That's the theory, that no water will go onto your property. In other words, he can't have a negative impact to your property. He can't build a subdivision and then you get flooded out. So there are going to be slight hydrologic, hydrologic changes, but that pond will capture that.
Okay, because right now, we're on the high side of Babin versus the, the low side, and we'd kind of like to maintain that, so... Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Murphy Orsmont?
How y'all doing, committee members? My name's Trey Orsmont. I'm Murphy Orsmont, the third, and I'm adjacent property owner. I do have some comments. You know, the, first of all, you know, in looking at the plot plan, Mr. Becknell was courteous enough to send me a drawing about a week and a half ago. You know, Babin Road has been inundated, you know, especially during Rita. Both sides of Babin Road has been flooded previously. You know, that, that, the elevation on this plot plan, it shows a flood zone C based on nineteen eighty-one. I know that flood zone C is no longer used. You know, there's updated maps. Just want to make sure that that's addressed. This section, basically, if you're looking at it from a geographic perspective, you know, this is a, you know, a low-lying area where a lot of the natural drainage does flow through this area. And you do have some existing culverts that located on Babin Road that drain into existing canal that goes into the main thoroughfare. I forget what actual, the terminology as far as the bayou. It may be a black bayou. I know that's a road that Babin continues on. But that actual drainage from the retention pond will flow down to a ditch across Babin in front of some adjacent properties and then flow directly into a common area ditch, which is no more than, you know, say, four foot in diameter. You know, maybe the same size as a culvert pipe that's supposedly there. That, the diameter, I haven't took the actual diameters of the pipe. They said that they are forty-eight inches. You know, that's questionable too as well. The water is another issue. Babin does not have water or parish water. Just wanted to see, get some information on how that's going to be run. You know, I have trees on all my servitudes too. I'd like to know if that's going to be affected. Let's see. I, I noticed that they have this common area, which is, you know, representation of, I guess, some of the drainage from the adjoining properties, you know, flowing into the detention pond. I just wanted to see if there's any sort of impact studies, because I know there are some other proposed subdivisions on Babin Road. So I just want to see if there's some sort of perspective, not just from this application, but the whole area and receiving streams downstream on how the capabilities of this, not this subdivision, but others in there is going to impact the area. That's about all that I have, but I just would like to kind of, you know, interject on those comments. And, you know, some of that relationship, Mr. Doos, you mentioned something about the common area. That common area does have, you know, a, the reason why it's there is basically with things, because there are cypress trees in front of Mr. Campanelli's property. And I don't believe that they would want to kind of take that out. I don't know if there was any wetland determination on that property too as well, because it is a low-lying area. You know, like I mentioned, you know, that, that whole area as far as Babin Road, there was only one access off of that property during Rita, and that was through J.D. Broussard to six twenty-one. You cannot access airline highway or go back to seventy-four. And, you know, from a, you know, that whole area's perspective, if you look at this, the vicinity map, you see that whole area is left void, and that's because that whole natural area was a natural flood zone, where a lot of that adjoining property had that elevation for, you know, that capability of letting that water, you know, basically come up and not affect, you know, property on it. But if we continue to develop that area, that will need to be addressed. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. That's it? Bill Wood?
Okay. As far as the technical drainage stuff, I'm going to let Mr. Sledge tell you all that, because I'm not an expert on drainage. But I can tell you that this is one of the highest pieces of property, highest pieces of property in Ascension Parish. Kind of like a hill, okay? And when you look at it, it is very high. The fences, the man asked about. If I have to put a fence, I will. I don't want to put a fence because those trees are, they're awesome, okay? And I, we need to tiptoe around them best possible. I don't plan on cutting down the trees. I plan on selling them with the lot. And as far as water goes, I do believe that I will have water from the parish water company. I've acquired several servitudes in the last few days, and I need, I'm, I'm real close to getting it. So we, I, and if that was the question he was asking about water, we will have water and a lot of the residents on Babin Road. I'm having to pipe water down the road or up the road. And so some of the residents on Babin Road will be able to tie into our water line.
Hang on just a second, Bill Wood. I want, I want to make sure that was their intent as far as the questions concerning water. Was, did, did your questions concern mainly flooding? Or was it as far as drinking water?
That was the other part.
I'll, I'll propose, sir. Yeah, I, you know, I'm liking from a relationship with fire protection, drinking water, and exactly knowing where the actual lines would actually run in the adjacent property. Because I know it does terminate on J.D. Broussard, and with the FEMA trail park, they did have another establishment off of Mr. Price with Ascension Water. But he told me that there was no preliminary plan on how exactly his property was going to be tied in. So that's the reason to my question.
All right, thank you. Bill Wood, please.
The water company, if at all possible, wants to go right down the road in the ditch, okay? And we have acquired several servitudes. And so we are going to get parish water or, and/or fire protection to the site, or we won't build it. We're not going to do it on a well.
Okay. You want to let Wayne come in and do his thing? I knew you were going to talk to us tonight, Wayne.
I like your new room. Get on TV and everything.
Kind of like it, too.
Wayne Sledge, GWS Engineering. First, I want to talk about the Leon Babin Road. In my toolbox, I do have all kinds of good information. This is the official printout concerning the road survey put out by the Ascension Parish. The history of that road is that it was actually created as a gravel road with a twenty-foot private servitude. Apparently, a move was made governmentally, I guess, to get it overlaid. For the parish to come in and overlay it, they went ahead and, and acquired public right-of-way on it. The records they have here show it to be thirty-nine feet. And what that really represents, it's like the outer limits of all construction. The speed limit, according to the official little printout, on that road is fifteen miles an hour. It is, it's a glorified trail is what it is. The official width is sixteen feet, like Bill Wood said. The road itself stops thirty feet short of the property line. When we had the pre-app meeting, it didn't show up really on the aerial, and it really didn't show up on the assessors map. And so it was kind of ignored at that meeting. A decision was made to go out directly to the, I guess it'd be the east. So we do have a second stubout to a tract of land that is not developed. But the consensus and the look, no one really realized it was a, a road basically worth tying into. And I guess what catches my eye the most is that it's posted for fifteen miles an hour. It is not geared up whatsoever for, for public transportation of any consequence. As far as the drainage? The drainage impact study on this one was inch and a half. We have done extensive calculations. We are routing the off-site water through the pond. We have addressed all of Mike's comments, to my knowledge. I don't think there's any outstanding issues. You know, we are, I think, somewhat even a little less than existing flow. Bill Wood is truly going to try to save the trees. The access, for various reasons, we prefer to have it the way it is, tying into that other road. I just don't think it's a good idea. I mean, it's y'all's call, obviously, but I don't think you want more traffic on that fifteen mile an hour road. You know, like I say, Mike can respond to some of this drainage stuff, but we have studied this thing to death. We're comfortable. The flood plain is an issue, but we are going to do mitigated field. We have done the calculations to, to do that. The wellage issue was classic, otherwise the United States. We've got to get a wellage permit to get in the bottom of the ditch. With that, I'd be glad to answer your question.
Questions, comments?
One question. You said the issue with post-development flow being about seven, CFS more than existing? That's been addressed?
It was actually a typo that's four, and that's been addressed. Your letter shows seven, but it was actually four.
The wetlands just consist of that ditch right there? Water's...
That's correct. And we have to get appropriate, I doubt.
Well, it won't be contiguous, so it won't be a cost use permit situation. That's mine. Thank you. If it doesn't tie into wetlands, it's not contiguous. So as the court's probably going to say, yeah, it's a ditch.
If you extend the gumbo to, to Babin, there's an existing driveway right about that same location, is there not?
There now? I came here to that, because, you know, it was never intended to be extended at, at that point.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
If parish route does not go all the way to the subdivision, I, I don't think that that would be a good idea.
Well, I, Wayne, let me ask you. What is the length that you have on that road?
I have twelve hundred and eighty feet.
You see, the, the document I've got shows the length from six twenty-one all the way down to be thirteen hundred and forty-four feet. Now, and when I, we, you know, I pulled right up. When I went and looked at the property, pulled right up to the fence. So I'm, I'm just a little confused. You said the property line stops thirty, or the road stops thirty feet short of the property.
The pavement stopped, the roadbed might have gone...
But it, so I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, like I said, I've got a, the document I've got, which I got from the planning department, shows thirteen hundred and forty-four feet, and you're saying twelve ninety-nine?
Which makes sense for the pavement to be short. See, this is totally dealing with the road grade itself. So that actually explains why it doesn't reach the property line, because the road itself is somewhat shorter than the length of the problem.
That makes sense.
Like, we did not generate this. This is Ascension Parish, like this. Karen here came up with this.
Having paved many roads in the parish, I know it is somewhat controversial, and O'Neil might be able to expand upon it, to pave past that official road length included in this document. O'Neil, do you have any feelings or thoughts on that?
My concern is that I want to make sure that tie, that we don't have a parish, I'm a parish law expert, there to be property or somebody that has a, that's not a property. It doesn't go to their property. I think that's not, but my, it's just a consideration that the commission can take.
And I understand that. I mean, you know, when I go out though, and I look at, when I'm looking at these properties and I see this stuff, I have to ask the question. So...
It's just a, just a comment that if we show it, a tie through somebody's property, that we've got a lot of property.
Point taken. If there are no other comments or questions from the commission, what's the wish of the commission?
I'd like to see the servitudes, the landscape buffer on lots one and sixty-nine. And I, I still think that it would be a better served subdivision if gumbo were extended to, to Babin. And the buffer to Mr. Campanelli would be, would be much wider and substantive. So I'll make a motion to that effect. To defer it.
You want to make a, a motion to defer?
Correct, sir.
Okay? With the...
I'd like to see the landscaping servitude on lots one and sixty-nine depicted on the plat.
Okay.
And I'd like to see gumbo extended to Babin.
Okay, with the landscaping servitudes shown on the plat and gumbo extended to Babin Road. Do I have a second?
Discussion. Is, is that something? I mean, you stated earlier, there was no, you had no intentions of doing that. Is that something that you would consider, that gumbo? Gumbo tying in with Babin Road?
If, if I have to tie it in, I'll tie it in. I mean, I would prefer not to, okay? But if, if that's what is required, then I'll do it. And we won't need to come back.
If you did that, would you be willing to put the easements on both of those? The easements that I asked you about earlier on the, on the existing?
One and sixty-nine?
Right.
Do you think it'd be necessary?
I think on that road, yeah.
Well, based on my traffic study, I think it says we have a, like, an A level of service.
You're talking about binding of the road or the landscape buffer?
Just talking about the turn lane to get off into the subdivision.
That's a narrow road. I, I mean, just looking at the, at, at that road right now, I mean, I, I think it's, it's warranted on, on easements to come in and out of that subdivision.
I'll, I'll take, I'll do both. And I'll also do the landscaping servitude on lots one and sixty-nine as a condition of the approval. No delays.
I'll give him that. I'll move for approv, I'll, I'll, can I reconsider my motion?
Yeah, you didn't give a second on the, you never had, this is, this is your chance.
I'll withdraw my motion, start over.
Okay.
Move for approval. So, with the plat being amended to reflect the extension of gumbo in connection to Babin, indication of the necessary turn lane easements or expansion of Babin Road right-of-way to accommodate turn lanes, indicate the landscape servitudes on lot one and sixty-nine, and that you get with a arborist, a licensed arborist to do your tree preservation. You just have to get with them.
That cannot be required. We don't have a landscaping service. We don't have a landscaping board.
You mean the arborist? That he showed, oh...
We don't have a landscaping board.
Yeah, but he's, he's saying that he's going to show the landscaping on those lots. That's all I want to do, is servitude, that's it. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, that's it.
Okay. I've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it contingent that a good suggestion would be that you get with a licensed landscape architect to ensure tree preservation of your large live oak tree and the others that you're concerned about on your home development sites on the back part of that property, the tree line. That's just the suggestion. I can't make you do it. I'm just suggesting that you do that.
Okay, because I get with landscape guys on all of my stuff, and I'm... Okay, because I get with landscape guys on all of my stuff, and I want to make it look right because I got to sell it.
Okay, I have a motion by Julio Dumas to approve with a second by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition? Motion passes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 70, Essent Terrace.
That's me again. Can't get enough, can you? Well, I'm trying to meet the housing demand. If someone, everybody, somebody's going to do it, I might as well be the one.
I thought, I thought Lake Triton was going to help you out for a while.
Sacrificial land.
This project is located on Du Plessis Road, and I'm requesting approval of a subdivide approximately 25 acres in the 66 lots. This subdivision will have two retention ponds, which will be stocked with bass and brim, as well as a common area of green space at the entrance and around the back sides of the lots. Development will feature curb and gutter streets with underground utilities. We followed all the guidelines, addressed all the comments, and are not requesting any waivers, and I believe this project will be an asset to the community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
I'll start off asking about Du Plessis Road, and it's another narrow road. Are you willing to put easements on each side of the road coming in?
Yes, sir. Just like we agreed to at Lake Triton next door.
Any other questions or comments from the commission at this time? Okay, then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property? Come on up, sign in with the secretary. No one wishing to speak? Comments or questions from the commission at this time?
I'll move for approval, subject to the developer amending his plat to indicate the necessary servitudes or right of way to accommodate turn lanes on Du Plessis, onto Essent Terrace Drive.
A second. Have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas, second by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition? Motion passes.
Thank y'all.
Agenda I to item eight, public hearings to grant the final, grant final approval to the following subdivisions. Eight A, Cedar Grove subdivision.
I'm Karen Kennedy with GWS Engineering. I'm here requesting approval of the final plat for Cedar Grove subdivision. The preliminary plat was approved July 13th, 2005. We had a final inspection yesterday. There were some minor punch list items that are being addressed now. Do you have any questions?
Questions or comments from the commissioners?
Where's the outlet from the sewer treatment?
There's a large bayou that runs through the, along the front of the property, and that's where that goes to.
Call that a large bayou?
Yes.
So, so it's right in to the ditch that goes through the development?
I'm sorry?
Is it right in the ditch that goes through the development at that point?
In the front, yes.
Just asking because we, I looked at it this weekend, and I didn't see that. It could be I just didn't see it, but I, I looked at it closely because the retention pond was right there.
The treatment plant, yeah, probably has not been installed yet, so it's not painfully obvious. It is going to be installed on tract TP right there where you see all those little contour lines. That is the existing drainage ditch that it will be tied into.
Okay.
You meant to say the large bayou?
I revised my statement.
Any, any other comments or questions from the commissioners at this time? Okay, well, then we'll go ahead and open it up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property? Please come in, sign in with the secretary. No one wishing to speak? Last time, gentlemen, any comments or questions? Well, then, what is the wish of the commission?
A move that we approve.
A second.
I have a motion to approve by Mike Bardwell, second by Alan Kraus. Is there any opposition? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 8B has been pulled from the agenda. Item 8C, Lakes at Oak Grove, third and fourth filings.
Greg Ferris of Ferris Engineering. We're asking for final approval on the Lakes at Oak Grove, third and fourth filing. It's the last of the property in this, in this subdivision. Final inspection has been held. We've addressed all the comments on the final plat, and we respectfully request your approval
Comments or questions from the commissioners?
Michael, anything outstanding on inspection that you're aware of that's critical?
I don't think so.
Any other comments or questions? Not that I'm going to open it up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property? Please come up and sign in with the secretary. No one wishing to speak? Comments or questions from the commissioner?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Second by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item nine, public hearing to consider the following servitude revocation. Nine A, St. Andrews subdivisions, lots 31 and 32.
My name is Oriol Bennett, engineer, and they're requesting to revoke that 15-foot servitude, which is a drainage, carries a drainage pipe through there. We're just going to realign it. The man bought the property, wants to build, build, build a house, a big, big house there.
Any comments or questions from the commission? If there are no comments or questions, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property? Now's the time to do it. Come up and sign in with the secretary. No one wishing to speak? Last time, gentlemen, any comments or questions?
From a procedural perspective, O'Neil, does the parish have to execute a revocation, or does Michael has to do it?
We're just going to revoke it, and he's going to write there, asking that he grant a servitude, which is going to be revoked.
It would revoke it, Tommy grants a new one. Okay. I'll move for approval, subject to the dedication of the servitude is requested by the Department of Public Works. 15-foot drainage servitude is requested by the Department of Public Works, and that both the revocation and dedication occur concurrently.
Have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
A second.
Second by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition? Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
We have a, item 10, public meeting to consider private road to be accepted into the parish maintenance system. Tammy Road?
This is only a recommendation, this is only a recommendation because the parish council has to accept road, accept a road into the system.
Coach?
My name is Jesse Sanders, and I'm standing in behalf of my son Maurice Sanders. And what we're asking the commission to do is to accept this into the parish maintenance system, that's the Tammy Road. Also, let me just say this, they say private road. Part of this is the parish, Tammy Road, it was already blacktop, but they just didn't do the other half. And what we're asking that the other half be taken into consideration for parish maintenance.
Comments or questions from the commissioners?
I've got a question. In your letter, you stated that a home is in the process of being built...
Yes.
On the road?
Yes.
Construction's already commenced on it?
Getting ready to start this week, yes.
Starting this week?
Yeah.
And there are no other homes presently on that section?
No, but that will be up, there's just one right now, but there will be others.
So permits have been pulled, and construction is beginning?
Do we have a recommendation with staff? Do we have a recommendation?
We don't have a recommendation.
Department of Public Works?
No.
The approval, the council approval?
I, I know, we're going to make a recommendation at planning commission. I'm just wondering if, if we have a recommendation from staff, as in DPW?
Is there anybody that can verify permits have been pulled, or, you know, that we, that we would know that? The reason I'm asking is because, based on district attorney's opinion, a private road that doesn't have any existing houses on it cannot be taken into the parish maintenance system. Is, that's my understanding? And that's, that's why I'm asking the question about permits and where, where construction is on the point of the home.
We have the permit. If I hadn't known, I would have brought it with me tonight. We have, matter of fact, he just got the permit to do it, and everything is ready to go, and they're going to start digging this weekend.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
So if I understand this right, the front piece is already maintained by the parish?
That's what I'm trying to...
That's, that's the way I understand it. It's just the back section of the property that, a big lane that's not under the maintenance system. Still probably... Here's your cut off.
And if they're going to start construction of a house, now I...
Okay, public.
Got it.
Is there a public meeting?
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
I'd just like to say, based on the fact that, you know, this is only a recommendation to the council, and they ultimately have the last say in voting, taking a private road into the parish. As it is today, we don't have a home on that, on that property. Therefore, I'm going to move that we recommend to deny it, based on the fact that, as it sits today, there is no home fronting that, that road, and you would have to have a home fronting that to meet the district attorney's opinion for taking a pair, a road into the parish. Now, with that said, it will go to the council. If, if by that time you have a home sitting on, I guess things could, could change drastically. But as it is, as it sits today, I would have to move that we deny.
Have a motion to deny by Mike Bardwell. Do I have a second? Second by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 11, public hearing to consider the Ascension Parish drainage ordinance. Mr. Sanji, you want to start the ball with this?
I do not have a presentation prepared. We talked briefly about it at the last meeting, and just wanted to see if there's any public comment on it. I mean, I can go through it in more detail if you would like to.
Well, let's see if the commissioners have any questions right now, and we'll go from there. Any questions or comments from the commission?
We've got one, dealing with the scope of the, the scope of the overall ordinance, and how it pertains to family partitions of property and simple divisions of property. Exactly, based on reading the ordinance and going through it, it, there was a few sections in here where I was unclear whether simple divisions were covered in this or family partitions. Michael, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
It, it is the intent for this to cover all residential, commercial, all development. And under applicability, it defines the, you know, what the development, what, what the term development of property means, and it's saying any man-made change to improved or unimproved real estate, including, you know, mining, dredging, filling, grading, whatever. So it is the intent by definition to apply to everyone. If you remember, these are ordinances that are being written to fall into a unified development code that will, where one ordinance will apply to all development.
You mentioned in section four, item C, talked about record inundation, and how that's considered on, on development. Is there a process in the parish right now where record inundations are recorded, based on a 100-year event or a 10-year event? Something that would substantially change. Is there a method currently used?
Well, we can only rely upon the amount of information that the Department of Public Works has. It is somewhat limited, but I do believe they are beginning to try to keep records of these. And I, I put it in the ordinance because I felt like if, if this is studied and documented greater in the future, that it would go ahead and be in the ordinance. And it also allows, you know, if we're in a public hearing and you have someone come up and testify that, you know, hey, I've seen a one foot of water over this road, you know, we, we can go back and look at the elevation of the road and make a pretty good assumption as to what the inundation level was. So there's really nothing officially that comes out as far as an elevation from the Department of Public Works, but I do think it's important to leave it in here.
So currently, if record inundations are taken, there's, if I'm understanding this correctly, there's no current database of record, of record inundations or files, or there may be limited means?
That's correct.
This is, this is trying to implement a more current tracking of record inundations?
Well, I'm not saying that there's funds available, nor am I saying who's going to be responsible to do it. It was my understanding, when we met with DPW, when we began to write the ordinance, that they were beg... uh, that they were beginning to, uh, try to build a database and, and track these inundation numbers. Now where they are right now, I, you know, I haven't checked recently.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
Michael, do you know, I'm just curious, have we defined in Ascension Parish all of our watersheds and where the layouts are? We were, Michael and I were at a conference two or three weeks ago, and East Baton Rouge Parish has that cool GIS system with all the watersheds, so are we to that level yet?
The parish has a stream map-
Yeah.
-in the GIS, but it is not going through and actually mapped, uh, the, to my knowledge, the drainage areas, uh, you know, to those streams. But on these individual submittals, you know, we're, the engineers are developing their own ridge lines, uh, where it's appropriate to, to determine watersheds onto the property.
And Michael, at, at the last meeting, you indicated that, um, the handout that you gave out, you had not incorporated everybody's comments, that you were waiting to incorporate anybody's comments, the handout that you distributed with the packet, does it have everybody's comments?
Well, the only comments, I believe, are from Mike, uh, but I have not, to date, these have not yet been incorporated. As we go through these hearings with these documents, it's, we've found it's, you get too many versions of this thing floating around, and you begin to wonder which version you're looking at. So, um, I was really waiting to see what kind of comments we got tonight, and then we'll probably make another version of it before it goes to the, to the council, strategic planning.
I'd like to see the full, all the comments.
Michael, one other thing, I, I'm sorry, I missed, uh, missed this comment a while ago. Um, dealing with excess placement of field below the flood, the base flood elevation, talks about compensating credit and excess storage credits may be created by a developer and utilized by another development if it meets the criteria as stated in this ordinance. Who's tasked with keeping up with those, um, or who will be tasked with keeping up with those storage credits as they're presented?
That would basically be our, our office of the ERA. Um, I did add in section E at the end that the credits must be utilized within two years. And the reason that's there is, is, I, I hope, the concern that you have is that, you know, if somebody shows up in three years and say, I wanna take use of a credit that was created three years ago, you would have the ability to not have to go back and look through your records and prove that. Generally, when these types of, um, exchanges occur, it's, uh, you know, one developer who has some extra credits, and he's got somebody else identified to take them, and it's usually a more immediate-type transaction. There's, there's also a requirement that that exchange can't occur where there's more than one foot of differential in the base flood elevation. So that starts to limit them geographically, how far they can go.
Only one foot differential?
Right. Now, in some parts of Ascension, a foot can go a long way, in other parts, it doesn't go very far at all, but, um, I just felt that was a reasonable place to, to break it off.
And, and this is, this, this last question I've got just pertains to, you know, recent developments dealing with the, um, the new FEMA flood, flood maps. Some of the parts of the parish, it looks like, um, the base flood elevations have risen. Some of the areas that I looked at were like two feet. I guess my question that pertains to, and, and this goes back to, once, once this ordinance would go into place, um, if a development is already in the stages, and obviously those FEMA flood maps are not approved yet, we've got, we've got the copies of them that, that state this, but of, of course, they haven't been approved. Um, if we're in the middle of a development, and that development's been designed under the premise of this ordinance for drainage, and then those rules are implemented, and that base flood elevation has gone up by two feet, can that significantly impact the, the way that that development was designed?
Well, I think the impact, um, presuming the, the subdivision design or construction of the streets moves forward, the, the real impact is gonna be felt by the developer or the builder, when the, the lot grade is, you know, maybe a foot, a foot below the hundred-year flood elevation, when, when they designed it, they intended for it to be one foot above. And so, um, what that's really gonna do is throw a burden on the builder who buys the lot, thinking that he doesn't have any fill to put in, and he learns that he does.
I guess that, that's more of a question on how to, how to implement this, if it goes through, and, and we, and we give a recommendation, and we're okay with it, and it gets to the council, and the council, um, goes through with it, I guess it's more or less a point of saying, how do we implement this to try to allow for those things?
Well, the current ordinance, uh, requires the structures to be built one foot above. I mean, I, I think we've got this issue irregardless of whether we're talking about the existing drainage ordinance or the new one.
Right.
So, um, but I, I think generally when a change occurs, irregardless of whether it's an ordinance change, or a FEMA change, or flood map change, generally if a preliminary plat's been approved per, uh, a, a current flood map, then, you know, technically, I think they probably could move forward all the way through. Now you and I have talked about the fact that there's a six-month window from the time a preliminary is approved until, uh, the construction plans have to be submitted, so that would be one way to have some control over that.
Well, that issue does come up, you know, more and more in light, because I know there's preliminary subdivisions that we've granted approval, way past out there six months from, from this point, and I don't see construction going on, and-
Well, you're, they're not-
You know, th- those types of issues really come into play when you're talking about implementing a new drainage ordinance and such, to where they fell under something, but technically, they should be rescinded now if they haven't s- moved forward with, with construction plans.
Yeah, I mean, the length of time to get a wetland permit, which literally every project is affected by, is, is greater than six months, so that's a, that's probably a situation that they're all under, but many of them are submitting construction plans to us within that six-month period. So whether or not that, you know, falls under the classification that they're proceeding or not, I would defer to O'Neil on that.
That's one of the things, I mean, the ordinance reads progressing, and that's, that's one of the things-
Right. I think submitting construction plans would be progressing. One other point, I think y'all saw it on one of the applications tonight, uh, DPW has been seeing some sneak previews of these maps, and where they see that the hundred-year is increasing, uh, they have notified us on the drainage forms that they submit to us for the pre-application meetings. But I, I have yet to have received any set of maps. I mean, we're still going on the old maps. I don't know what, whether they are official, or where the status of them is, but, um, you know, there's a long process before FEMA actually, or the parish, actually adopts it and says, okay, we're gonna, you know, this is what we're going with.
Yeah, even if they're not official, it'd be nice if a development's proposed to build that into there, even though it's not official.
Generally, the developers wanna know that, too, uh, you know, much rather know it on the front end. So, like I say, I, I think we have been getting some information from DPW. Uh, I don't know the status, but we would love to get a set of the maps, uh, if we could. I don't know if it's prudent and proper yet or not, 'cause I'm not really following the process. I think the sooner we could get a hold of them, the better.
I, I've got a, a question, and I don't know the answer. I, I think the answer is not a pretty answer, let's put it to you this way. But, um, how can you address, or how can we address an issue where you, you've got a home, it's existing home, and the adjacent property, property owner now comes in, gets wind of what the new FEMA maps are, he's building a home today, and his finished floor elevation is literally four and a half feet higher than his adjacent next-door neighbor. And, I mean, that's an impact on that neighbor, no matter what.
I mean, potentially, I said, that's, that's what's going on.
I don't know that I have an answer for that. I don't think we're gonna see four and a half feet increases, but, uh, you, you are gonna see a couple of feet in some situations.
I, I, like I said, I, I don't have the answer, I, I don't even know, I can't begin to fathom what the answer is, but it's, I can tell you, I, I'm personally witnessing it, not with my home, but home down the street, and, and, um, I mean, his next-door neighbor's finished floor elevation is literally halfway up the windows in his house. It looks very odd. Not to mention the runoff from that lot, it's always gonna be an issue.
Charles, question for you. Didn't, um, didn't Marion make several copies, the set of maps? I'm wondering, is it possible we could get another set, so Michael could have a set to, to evaluate, to see just, just where these changes are occurring? Even though it's not official, it would be reference material for our ERA to, uh, if you would check on that, see if that's possible.
Charles, are they accessible on the web? Or don't you get, didn't you guys post them? Lance, is there any?
I don't, I-
Are there ones?
I think they're out there. Yeah, I think they're-
I didn't know if they were accessible on the web, I thought that they were, um, they were at the, at the plan department, I thought the library, I thought I read that they were gonna have a set in the library.
They're on the website.
They are on the website.
Yes, they're on our website.
That makes it easy.
You know where the website is, don't you? Okay.
We will.
Mike, I have a, a-
But, but let me say this, too, I mean, we, we're gonna need some kind of official word from the council that we are ready, I mean, I, I can't, you know, necessarily, even if I have the data, can't necessarily start enforcing it, I think we need to make some kind of inquiry to the council as to what is the schedule to begin enforcing.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say do anything official, but, I mean, it's, it's reference material for you.
Well, and it's information we can pass on to the developer, but, but we do need, you know, um, I would like to know a schedule where, if the, if the council or DPW can tell us as to, when they anticipate that we will be, begin enforcing the new. And I can do that, now that I know they're out, I mean, I can, I can make that request through, uh, Bill Rood.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
I do just have a thought, uh, Mike, maybe you can enlighten me, that section eight, erosion and bank stability, was there, um, was there any discussion or comment or questions about, um, and I'll tread lightly, uh, discussion of rebuilding riparian zones or, or stream bank, uh, rebuilding, I, I see a lot of times in, in the work that I do, it's, it's all about making the water move faster through an area, and, um, and that seems like a good approach. However, at some point, it does lead to more erosion and less bank stability. I guess, in, in the field, environmental consulting that I deal with, lessening the turbidity for some of these streams, um, you know, we always try to look at recreating riparian areas to absorb some of this water, and, and let the plants and trees, to some degree, help out with evapotranspiration, not be in the stream itself to prohibit flow, but to do a couple of things, uh, transpire, evaporate some of the water, and also, uh, clear up some of our muddy water, allow some of the sediment to fall out. East Baton Rouge Parish got into the, uh, the game of pushing the water down to, to us, and now, you know, I guess my fear is, when we're, when we're looking at this, we wanna do lessons learned, and we don't wanna do the same thing to our neighbors to the south, or ourself. So, I get, I don't know if that's a question in there somewhere, Mike, but-
Well, I think maybe we're on different topics here. This is really more about, uh, telling the developer, if he's gonna construct an open ditch, what kinda side slopes he has to utilize, and it's more for the purpose that we don't have the bank sloughing in, uh, that type of thing.
Do we also tell him at that point, we want him to re-sod the bank? Or we just tell him the angle of the bank? We don't tell him, now, okay, he's got exposed soil, we don't have anything on the books to say, pin, pin and sod? Fiber mat, whatever?
Well, those would really, issues would all come up as part of construction plan details, um, so I don't really think it's prudent-
Wouldn't be part of this ordinance? You don't see it as part of the-
I, I would not see it as part, because you, the problem with the ordinance is, I mean, you, there's maybe three or four different ways they can skin the cat, and so, you know, it's a little bit detailed to, to go into that. That would really fall more under construction standards, uh, and specifications and that type thing. And I, I think, Laverne, if I'm not mistaken, under the specifications we've written, if certain slopes are, exceed a certain value, that they do have to provide vegetation on them. So that's really more of a construction specification issue.
Well, Michael, along the same lines, wouldn't you at least have the ordinance say that the maximum slopes shall be X, Y, and, and shall have appropriate stabilization in accordance with the standards, our current standards?
Oh, we could. You could, it's just-
Now, the other thing is on, on the, on the detention ponds, um, you know, once, once you go to a, a depth of, you know, two feet below the control elevation, what's the harm in having a steeper slope like a three to one? I mean, that's, soils around here, that's not gonna go anywhere.
Uh, below the water surface, you're correct, they, we, we could do it, uh, steeper than that, and I'm not sure if there's some language in here, but that's a good point. I mean, generally, you can go as steep as two to one, uh, underneath the water surface. We can clarify that.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? And then I'm gonna go ahead and open this up for the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, you'll have your time to speak.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone, I'm Lane Stout. I live just east of Gonzales, in the small community of Duck Roost, Louisiana. I've been up at this podium several times before, and felt compelled tonight to come bring a few little bullet points for consideration, just to talk about a few specific issues that we have lived firsthand, that we've been dealing with for about the last three years. We have a very precarious flooding situation. Uh, we're affected by both backwater flooding, and by, uh, I'll call it flash flooding, for no better technical term than I know of. We went to this commission, uh, a little bit over two years ago, with a petition with a hundred and twenty-five signatures of homeowners in our neighborhood, in our community, to implement a flood overlay zone, to give some protection from development. And, untechnically, we specified several things that could be done that are, or other, um, let me say it a different way, we specified things that we knew, if were done, would adversely impact us. That flood overlay did not get impacted, did not get implemented. In the meantime, the time that has passed, we have seen development in our community that we feel like will impact us, and it's not by developers, it's by individuals, but it's large scale. So, I have some bullet points, I don't know if I need to pass this out to y'all, or if y'all can just see on the monitor here? can just see on the monitor here? I'm glad Mr. Sanji brought up that there were several different versions of the document floating around, because I have read one, but I'm not sure which version it was. So, some of these things may have already been incorporated. I did see the council meeting, where the developers came to the meeting and said, oh, we, we weren't, we did not participate in all of the, um, pre-hearings, 'cause we didn't know about it, and, and I didn't either, so, uh, I apologize for that. But, um, one of the topics here that, uh, that we, that I would like to see, is that somewhere in your new ordinance, that you adopt a, an absolute no adverse impact philosophy. This is something that I recommended to the council and the commission over two years ago. Several communities are doing it. It's, um, a recommended practice by the NFIP, um, and it would put the burden on individuals and developers alike to demonstrate that planned moderate size and larger earthwork within the floodplain would not adversely affect adjacent upstream, downstream property owners. As I mentioned, this property that we're seeing now is over a twenty-five acre parcel that has had a huge lake created on it, and land built up anywhere from one to four feet, and it's in the flood basin, and it's in a low-lying area. Nothing triggered the, the requirement of getting a permit. It's not a developer, he wasn't building no great houses. But yet, the floodwater is not gonna know whether that dirt was put there by a developer or an individual, so the effects can be the same. The second point is that, in these low-lying areas that a lot of us live in, we see a lot of people dig ponds. You have two, three, four acres, you go dig a pond, take the dirt, spread it around your yard, put some in your neighbor's yard, put some in your other neighbor's yard. If I go to build a shed to put my tractor in, if it's over twenty-five hundred bucks, I have to go get a permit. And if I start that shed and don't have a permit, y'all are gonna catch me, y'all are gonna shut me down, I'm gonna go get a permit. But when somebody gets ready to move twenty thousand yards of dirt out of a lake on the twenty acres, what do we do? Do we have a mechanism that requires that person to go get a permit, so that somebody from the parish can at least look and see what this dirt is gonna do to the adjacent landowners and adjacent streams, all within the floodplain? I have a recommendation, anyone digging a pond greater than nine hundred square feet, I don't know the number, put nine hundred in there as a placeholder. If you're gonna dig a pond over a certain size, I, I hate it, hate to think of it, but I think in the time, in the conditions that we live in now, we're looking at things like this. Get a permit, let somebody at least have a cursory look to see that that's not gonna be an adverse impact. If you import more than twenty-eight yards of fill material into the floodplain during any twelve-month period, have to get a permit to do it. Twenty-eight yards, again, placeholder. I don't know the magic number. I don't know how you guys ever came up with twenty-five hundred dollars for a building permit. That would have to be triggered. Also, if there is major earthwork that's gonna take place in a community, I think the, uh, the, uh, immediately adjoining adjacent property owner should be notified, just like they are for subdivisions. This property that I referenced, that's had all this modification to it, carried two of our major parish drainage ditches through it, one of which has been totally covered, and the other is currently being relocated. But in the interim, there's been some drainage grief and a lot of questions from residents about what's gonna happen to our drainage. We didn't know that anything was occurring till a large machinery moved in and started doing the work. Another bullet, prohibit imported or locally dug material from being placed in a manner that effectively creates a diversion or weir to naturally draining waters within the floodplain. We always talk about no impact, about running the water into a detention pond, but what happens when that subdivision or that land is built up and it's all, it's in a slough? The water that comes from downstream, it impacts it. In our particular case from experience, when we have high water, water comes up, can't get under the Highway nine thirty-five bridge, it actually flows over Highway nine thirty-five. Would go across the highway, through this open field, through this big slough, through the woods, eventually back to, to Black Bayou. Now, over fifteen hundred feet of this property is filled in, approximately three feet higher than it was, all the way from, almost from the bridge, almost up to the hill. So, that water can't flow where it used to flow. That dirt is, even though it's building up for what could be a development or a private owner, it's gonna act as a levee. Those kinda conditions have to be prevented. The creation, excuse me, the third to last bullet point, the requirement that a developer provide a verification of having their core of engineers permit before you guys give them a preliminary. Other parishes do it. If you don't have your final from the core, we don't take it into consideration. Short and sweet. The second bullet, last bullet point, the creation, implementation of an enforcement division to detect and enforce violations of parish development ordinances. We have ordinance today on the books that prohibit the import of fill material. It's happens every day. It's happened large scale in my neighborhood. You can ride out there, you can see it. Dirt moved from one landowner's property to another's. We've called, we've talked to everybody we know. It seems there's no enforcement mechanism. We desperately need one. Last bullet point, the creation of a citizens advisory group to actively participate in future revisions and modifications to all drainage issues. I know volunteers are hard to get. I appreciate the work you guys do, I appreciate the time and the few words I've had to give y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Russo?
Good afternoon, I'm Paul Russo, and, uh, I live adjacent to this property that Lane was describing to you, and I wanna echo some of his thoughts about, uh, things that need to be looked at. I mean, I have a couple pictures here, if I could pass them around. It, uh, it just will kinda show you why we have a need for these, uh, a better, a better way of looking at things. Like Lane said, you know, you, you, in the development zones, you have law, but when you have one individual that will come in and take an area and do a large-scale thing to it, I mean, there's, there's nothing to go by, and, uh.
I've marked just a few of these pictures to look at.
Put them under there so they can be.
Yeah.
Go ahead and see them under the.
All right.
Put them under the monitor, so we can all see them.
Okay, well, you have to really look at it like, you know, looking at it. This is a shot across from my house of the adjacent property. This runs all the way west to Black Bayou, and in this area, the land slopes down, and you have a, at least a three-foot drop, or better. The water goes over the road there when we have a heavy, heavy rain, and, uh, now this whole area's been filled, and this, as Lane was saying, now the water has to come all the way back around. And I mean, I've already had water up on, um, almost on my carport, and I built my house in eighty-six and built it to what the parish told me to do. So, now, I feel like I'm at great risk with this. So, it's just, it's just this type of thing that we need to look at. We need to go beyond looking at what a developer would do, and, uh, look at some of these large-scale things. It's, it's like, if someone, like he said, if someone's building anything, Laverne is gonna come by and ask you about it. But if somebody's gonna deforest twenty-five acres, no one asks them anything, you know? And if it's in a visible place that you know floods, you know it's in a floodplain, something needs to be addressed. And, uh, that's really all I have to say. I mean, it's, we're going through a growth period here, and it's a learning thing, and, uh, I know it's difficult, and I respect the right of an owner to do what they'd like to do with their property, but we all have to be considerate and follow guidelines. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. No one else wants to speak? Comments, questions from the commission?
One thing was stated about the, um, bringing in, are you digging ponds and, and putting that dirt in, in various locations? I do know that the, the, um, strategic planning in the council did pass, uh, among the assumption they passed, in ordinance dealing with, um, digging ponds and such, I don't know that it would, um, exactly trigger anything at this time, but it's probably something that could be used to trigger, to know in a year's time how much fill is put in, in various areas of the parish, that doesn't come before the commission, that we don't know anything about. Maybe that, that could be used in conjunction to, to address some of those concerns. The, the, um, talking about the jurisdiction of wetlands, the, uh, the commission has toyed around with that idea of whether to, to require a full permit before we hear, or just wait on delineation. Most recently, I think we, um, we just extended that, that deadline, um, by several months. That's one of the things that, that's currently in here, um, but it's just, you know, it's, there's no changes, right, Michael? Compared to the way the ordinance reads today?
Right.
As it is to, to this ordinance? So, that's, that's definitely something, if, if we wanted to look at it further, we could, we could definitely do that. I've talked with Michael about that issue, and it, it's done differently, and depending on where you go and which parish you're in, things are done differently.
Any other comments or questions? Michael, let me ask you, you, you got some, some comments as far as residents, I mean, are these things that you can, you feel like you can work with? I mean, is there something that, some validity that you could?
I, I feel like, uh, really, most of his concerns are addressed, um, you know, we, we, now, the issue of fill does apply in this new ordinance, it does apply to everyone, but it's only applicable to properties in the flood zone. In other words, if someone wants to go move a bunch of dirt, dig a pond, or fill, and it's not in the flood zone, then this proposed ordinance would not regulate that. Generally, when you see people doing this, it's, it's in a flood zone, because they're trying to elevate their property. Uh, but I, I do wanna be clear that I think we're addressing it in the sense that it does apply to everyone, but it's only applicable to property within the flood zone.
Yeah.
When it is applicable, do we require like an environmental impact statement or study or anything like that? It's evaluated and goes through the DPW process of whether it happens or doesn't happen?
Well, in, in this case, I mean, that has yet to be determined, but in this case, the permits, I presume, would need to be issued through, uh, Laverne's office. Or he would have the enforcement capability, uh, uh, one, contrary to one of the comments mentioned about we're not enforcing the code, to my knowledge, there is no code on the books about placement of fill in flood zones or, or fill in, in any way. We are currently enforcing, uh, the fill mitigation for subdivisions, uh, simply because it's a FEMA policy, and it was, as I, as I understand it, it began before my tenure here, but that, that was a directive that came from FEMA, and so that has been, uh, implemented for several years, only on items that come before the planning commission. So, really, what we're trying to do with this ordinance is to make the policy fair to everyone in the parish, uh, and make it apply across the board.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? What's the wish of the commission?
Just for information, I, I think the next move with this would be to send it to, uh, strategic, or send it to the council, but it would, these are typically been flowing through the Strategic Planning Committee.
I think any revisions, any newer versions, would still come before the commission, before anything would be finalized.
I'm not sure about that, um.
Not if we approve it?
It's an ordinance.
And, uh, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think a lot of yours were questions, there were some, some pretty minor typo, uh, comments. I don't have your document with me.
Most of my comments were, were points of clarification for me.
Right. I don't think there was any significant changes, maybe some typo or, or some.
Yeah, there was one or two little thing of that nature.
I would defer to Mike to see if he feels that, that, you know, he needs to see a, a cleaner version and.
Uh, the only thing that I would wanna be sure of is that comments that are made are looked at and addressed. I mean, we had some comments made tonight, um, as long as those comments are being taken down and they're being looked at for validity, and to make sure that we don't need to add things to this ordinance to address some of those issues, as long as that's being done, there is no other draft here. What, what you got originally, like you said, was, is the same ordinance, there was a few housekeeping items in, in, in terms of, um, very minor things, there wasn't any wording, per se.
Yeah, I mean, the gentleman raised a lot of issues, I mean, for instance, the issue about the core permit, well, the, one of, when you go to get the core permit, what they wanna see is, have you gotten approval of the planning commission? So, you know, to sit here and say the planning commission can't approve something until you get a core permit, well, you're basically gonna shut them down, you're, you're gonna be the chicken and egg situation. But, but the normal process is the, the local agency approves the project, and, and, and at that point is when the core acts on the actual wetland permit. So, I'm not sure that, and even if that's the wish of the commission or the parish, I'm not sure that that issue belongs in the drainage ordinance. Uh, it's really a separate, you know, that's really an environmental permitting, uh, issue. So, I, I, I feel, the, the only thing that the gentleman mentioned that I think we're not doing, as I said before, is that we're not trying to regulate fill that's not in the flood zone, and I'm not so sure that we really have much jurisdiction to do that anyhow. Now, it's very clear in here that if you alter a ditch or a drainage way, that you have to submit an analysis and have that approved, so, um, but as far as somebody just digging a pond or placing fill on their property outside of the flood zone, I'm not sure that we have a position, or should have a position, to try and regulate that.
Well, there is a, you know, and, I, I may be premature in saying this, but I know the council had an ordinance go before them for, um, for, for someone digging a pond. Does any, Laverne, did that pass?
Uh, just for some talk, and, uh, I didn't know.
Didn't know.
I'm not aware of it.
I know, I know it was brought up, and I was thinking about that as being, possibly being a way to trigger if, if something's going on. I mean, 'cause they would have to be pulling the permit anyway, but you said that didn't make it through.
And there, there will be additional public hearings, um, you know, on this, at, at both the committee and full council as well. Um, just, you know, so y'all know that.
Well, my only substantive issues were the, on the erosion and bank stability, you know, I thought that in the detention ponds, and, Michael, if you could incorporate, you know, something at a given distance below the control water elevation, and they can go to a steeper slope and require stabilizing of, of the bank, you know, in a manner that's acceptable, and, uh, your rear yards, well, is there a particular reason why five to one, four to ones, too steep?
Uh, that's been the policy, uh, really that came from DPW, that's really been enforced now for several years, so.
Okay. Just curious, okay.
See, my, my overall concern with this thing is, we, we approve. See, my overall concern with this thing is, we approve it, and it goes to the council, the council decides to send it to Strategic Planning, and tonight during, for our public hearing, we had two residents come and speak before us. We didn't have any developers, we didn't have any engineers give any kind of input at this meeting. Now, are they going to come out of the woodwork at the council meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Are they going to come out of the woodwork at the Strategic Planning Committee meeting? And so, whatever comes back to us that we have to uphold, it may lose some of the, some of the teeth.
It could be a different document than this.
Yeah. I mean, you know, now I have, I have concerns after what I saw happen with the construction standards.
Well, let me ask you a question, Michael, you sent this out to engineers to practice in the parish.
Right, let me, well, we had several working meetings, I believe it was Ron Ferris's office, as well as Wayne Sledge's office, were invited to meetings, they attended it, they reviewed it, they provided comment. Quite frankly, there's some things that they view very favorable in here. First of all, I don't think there's anything in here that we're not currently requiring or enforcing anyhow. So to them, it's simply, what I hope that it is, is a verification in an ordinance format of what it is we're looking for.
Codifying what you're asking for.
Yes, what we're currently asking for. I have made provisions in here, in the terms of stormwater detention, where if a development is far enough down in the watershed, and has immediate access to the main channel, the detention would not be required. Frankly, they're very favorable of that, I mean, they're looking for situations where they do not have to do it. So, in my opinion, I think they're probably eager, and we've already, the problem I've got now, is since I've kind of let the cat out of the bag of a policy on detention, you know, I'm already getting hit with some of these developers, or engineers coming and saying, hey, you know, here's this site, I don't want to do detention, and now I'm in a situation, because this isn't ordinance yet, and it may comply with the criteria, but, you know, so I'm interested in getting this adopted as soon as possible. Will there be people show up? Yeah, probably, because quite frankly, until it goes before the council, they just don't take it serious, and may not provide, you know, so where's it going to go, I don't know. I think you're going to have more opposition from the general public when they realize that they've bought a piece of land and owned it for 15 years, and now the parish is going to step in and say they can't fill it. I think that's where the rub is going to be. But, you know, we feel it's the fair thing to do. So, I mean, all I can say is, is maybe to consider letting it go forward, and if there are substantial changes to it, do we communicate that back to the commission? Yeah, we certainly can.
Well, if it does, you know, if the commission decides to move forward with it, I would, I'd like to see these bullet points accompany it.
I can, I can write a response to that, but unless the commission feels that we should regulate fill outside the floodplain, and I have a copy of his documents, but I listened and I took notes, I'm not sure that there's going to be any changes.
I still, I mean, you know.
And if you feel we need to address those comments, then let's do that.
Part of the issue here, too, and it's, if it's this ordinance, or the next one, because you and I have had some brief discussion about this, and it's comments, we're looking for comments, we want to hear from the general public, we want to hear from, since we deal with developers and engineers, we want to hear from, and we don't. And here we've got some commentary. And I understand what you're saying as far as governing within the floodplain and outside of the floodplain, I do understand that. But I think that since we've got this commentary, it should, it should still, it should travel with this, to show, hey, we, this is what we getting, this is what we got.
Oh, we certainly could, if you want, if we would bring it to the council committee, we could, we could make those comments, or document those, particularly since he's taken the time to prepare them unlike others. Sure, I mean, we could certainly provide those comments even with the draft of the ordinance.
Okay.
And then I think the council would have an understanding of the issue.
Sure.
Four of his eight comments are specifically geared towards floodplain, and his fifth comment is corp. engineers, which is obviously going to only occur in a wetland or floodplain area, so, you know, he's, I don't think he's looking at, the comments don't look like, to me, like they're regulating fill not in a floodplain area, that's not his comments anyway, and I agree with you, I think that's going to be extremely hard to.
Well, he did say things about fill, more than 28 yards of fill, or digging a pond of a certain size, so.
Yeah, into the floodplain.
Well, if he's specifically saying into the floodplain, then I don't think there's anything contrary, but I think that's a very good point, let's take his written comments and provide them to the council along with the ordinance. This was the comments we.
Should we address where your document may be addressed?
I think I could, yeah.
I mean, because you and I discussed, what, the last, no, two meetings ago, I believe, you know, if you want to get a six yard dump load, dump truck load of dirt, you live in a floodplain, you're not going to do much detriment with six yards of dirt. If you want to cut a little swell ditch in your yard to kind of help your yard drain, you're not, you're not impacting, it's, you're not impacting the residents, you are only having an impact on yourself, and hopefully for the good. But when you have a situation where someone is going out and doing something on a massive scale, and it may not be as massive a scale as others, but where you're impacting those around you, we do need to.
Right.
Try and do something about that. Now, enforcement wise, and O'Neil, I know we're not enforcement.
Neighbors have private rights of actions, too, they just, you know, people need to look into their private rights of action, and not. I think that's the issue, you look at your private rights of action.
Well, at the same time, though, and I don't know how far the inspection department is, is taking as far as enforcement of this type of stuff, I don't think y'all get into this. Is, DPW does some.
Some degree.
So that's as close as we've got right now for enforcement, and that's kind of a maybe.
But they have no ordinance to enforce.
There's nothing, yeah.
And this is going to give them that ordinance, I mean, it's the first step.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think you made a good point, I mean, people are going to show up at the commission, they're going to, I mean, at the council meeting, they're going to, they're going to come, because all of a sudden, that's real. Here, we're just a recommendation, and Mr. Stout, hopefully, is going to bring his comments to the council at that time as well, and, you know, they'll be there.
No other comments or questions from the commissioners?
I made a motion that we approve this, the comments attached, and might do a little summary of the response.
Send it to the council.
I'd like to add that the comments that were provided to Michael be incorporated into the ordinance, sent to the council.
You second it? I have a motion to approve by Alan Kraus, seconded by Julio Dumas, is there any opposition? Motion passes.
Mr. Stout, do you have an extra copy of your comments for Mike, please?
No.
I'll get them later.
Item 12, committee reports, 12A subdivision ordinance committee. Last month, the committee did not hold a meeting, we will be holding one this month, and it will be next Wednesday at the planning department, a small conference room. We have, well, we've been talking about the family partition ordinance, that's probably going to come before the commission next month for review. O'Neil has looked over it, I don't think he's found anything wrong with what we've got, so it's passed legal. Michael, I think I sent you, I emailed you a copy of it, it's been some time back.
It has.
Just so you could look over if there was any comments, but I never got anything back from you.
Okay.
Other than that, that's pretty much it for right now. Item 12B, Strategic Planning Committee report. Mr. Bardwell.
The biggest topic that's been going on in terms of planning, strategic planning, is the construction specifications. Once those document, once that document was approved within our scope and sent, that's whenever, you had a lot of developers, a lot of, a lot of different people showed up and voiced opposition to that document. So, that's what's been going on for about the last month and a half, I guess, has been several meetings, several special strategic planning committee meetings dealing with these, so they've been given, you know, two week increments to look into and make comments, and then come back. After this went on for two or three meetings, the next thing that happened was, this past Monday night, Strategic Planning went ahead and wants the document to come back to planning and zoning. So that document will be coming back to us. The council is only going to go ahead and pursue voting on their individual issue in the ordinance, which all that, all that part of it does is reference, instead of referencing DOTD, it'll reference this new policy. It's a commission policy, and it's coming back for us to address these comments, that the developers and the steering committee that got together outside are making comments, submitting those to Michael, and just to know, we'll probably see it back next month. So it's not totally done yet, but we knew that going in, it's a living document, so there are going to be some changes, we just didn't expect them this quick. That's all I've got.
A lot of people showed up?
Hmm?
A lot of people showed up?
Okay. Item 13, new business, 13A planning commission bylaws. One of the things that the subdivision ordinance committee has been working on is a set of bylaws, a set of guidelines for the commission, the commission has never had one. And it seemed like this is a good time to do it, especially since we've been getting so many new commissioners recently. And it would help, be of benefit, I think, to commissioners to understand some of our policies and procedures, I think it'll help for a smoother meeting. This is only up tonight for review. The next step would be a motion for a public meeting, that's all it requires, is a public
So are there any comments or questions from the commission?
Just a comment, it looks like we're just putting in writing what we're already following, I mean, everything in here in this document looks pretty.
Basically, it is, it's already established procedure, there are a few things that are a little different, some minor additions. I can call out a couple of them to you. One of the things that we haven't been doing is, we really haven't established a timeframe or amount of time for a public presentation. That's if someone comes to the commission, wants to present an issue, we've gone ahead and we've established a timeframe for that. Also, going ahead and, if a commissioner cannot make a meeting, we've asked that you go ahead and contact myself, Charles Becknell, let us know what's going on. And if you don't, and you do it three times in a row, you get a letter from Mr. Parenton asking, hey, you know, what's going on, which I think that's fair, it's reasonable. So, in my opinion, I mean, it's something that gives us a little more order, I think it will help us to fulfill our purpose better. So, if anybody's got any other comments or questions, now's the time to ask them.
I agree, I think you need to put a time limit on, not only presentations, but also time limit on statements, and I think you also need to put a time limit on rebuttals.
Well, that's in here also. Anyone speaking during a public hearing, or during a public comment period, is granted three minutes. And I haven't really held fast to that, because for the most part, we don't really have anybody that goes over that time period. My big concern is the time for rebuttal. When dealing with a subdivision, we have an applicant represented by himself, or a designated, and they go ahead and they have their time period that they can, they make their presentation to the council, or commission. Public comment period, the public hearings opened up, and everybody gets three minutes. Now, if you've got a spokesperson for a group, we allow five minutes. After that, there's rebuttal. And the rebuttal can go on indefinitely.
See, that's my point, I think you put time limit.
But I'm saying what's happening right now.
Yeah.
And that, but that's addressed in here. There's a time when the rebuttal stops, it's time for commissioners to discuss these issues amongst themselves, and make a decision. So, that is addressed in here.
Any other comments or questions?
Do you want a motion to adopt them?
Well, we need to have a public meeting to adopt them.
Okay, well, in that case, let's move to schedule a public meeting at the next meeting.
So I have a motion to approve putting them on the agenda for next month for a public meeting, is there a second?
Yes, second.
A motion to approve by Julio Dumas, seconded by Scott Courtwright, is there any objection? Motion passes. This time, I have another item of new business I'd like to bring up, something real quick. Yesterday, I received a letter from Mr. Don Heisel, part of the parish administration. No, I hadn't had a chance to look at it. Well, you know, Neil, I'd kind of like to hear from the administration, and I understand it's resolved, but I'd still kind of like to hear from the administration on this. You know, just what happened. The letter, I thought I had.
It resolved.
But I didn't, was that we had to go ahead and appoint a recording secretary for our commission. commission. And this was an issue that was brought up in the parish council meeting last Thursday, and when I left, I thought it was the council subcommittees. So, I get this letter from the parish CAO. At the end of the letter, he says, "Well, if you've got any questions, call me." So, I did. He's out of town. So, I contacted legal counsel. Legal counsel and I chatted about it a little bit, but I'd still like to hear from the administration just what's going on with this. I mean, last month, we had two commissioners resign. This month, we've had a commissioner resign. There are six of us up here, and I get a letter saying I've got to appoint somebody as a recording secretary. Now, fair's fair. I, I'd just like to, I'd just like to get some, some commentary from the administration, which I, Mr. Tom Fancy, who's Director of Planning, he was here, so I'd like to find out what's going on.
Just, he did respond to me, and I emailed you. He said, "No, that does not apply to you."
It does not apply to us.
It does not apply to this commission.
Okay. Then, I'm just kinda curious why I got the letter to start with. It's my understanding that some of the other commissions got it too. All right, moving along then. Item 14, Old Business. 14A.
Excuse me, can I bring up one other topic?
Sure.
One of the things too, and I wanted to let everybody know, in strategic planning, is that they invited the Board of Ethics to sit on that board as well. I mean...
Board of Adjustments.
Board of Adjustments. I'm sorry. In speaking with Mr. Cecil at that meeting, he indicated, and I want to recognize him out in the off, in the audience, he's the chairman of Board of Adjustments. And one of the things that we agreed to start to try to do is to work and communicate better with, between the two boards. So, that's one thing I wanted to bring up. I think it'd be a good thing. He's, he's represented here tonight, and I think, you know, we should try to make some of those board meetings, because they deal with a lot of the same types of issues. Not, not specifically the same issues, but, you know, we're all working towards the same come and go. That, I just wanted to make that comment.
Do you have any comments or questions? Any other new business? Should've asked that. I didn't, sorry. Moving along then to item 14, Old Business. 14A, The Alice Jackson Estate, Tracks 2A through 2F. Is there anyone here to represent this property this evening?
Robert Jackson. At the last meeting we had, the survey were here, and I think you all say that they had to stop until we do what the complative about the property, being cleaned up, or whatever about the trailer. So, I left you all. Ever since, I've been working dearly, trying to get thing did, to please you all. Got a pad pulled for this trailer, and also, I had about three trees, four trees, matter of fact, that are removed, and I didn't finish cleaning it up though, with the trees I got thrown down and some degrees still yet on the ground. So, I want to come to you all to, so I need to survey the grade on and, and do this part on getting the land surveyed. And I talked to Mr. Laverne. He came out and he looked at the place, and he could verify that I've been working on it and trying to do my best, because we need to survey the grade on and proceed.
Any comments or questions from the commissioners?
Laverne, you went out there with your, you have some feedback?
Yeah, I made a visit there and I talked with Mr. Robert. He's, did what he said. He took, taken it, built the pad, and I made sure it was in the proper area. Only problem with it is, guys, that I realized that in order for Mr. Robert to place this trailer and get a permit on it, the land is, is, is a zoning issue that this person that's placing this trailer is not immediate family member of the present landowner. Therefore, we don't, we kinda caught in a catch where we don't know what to proceed with the permitting or had the land subdivided first and then allowed a permit to be issued. That's my question. I know he's willing to work and take care of the issue, but he's at the point where he hasn't moved the trailer. I understand the axle on the trailer's been busted. He said he has a replacement axle. Once that's done, the trailer will be put on the pad once it's cured to have the weight put on it. And the next issue would be the, the buildings and components that were attached to the trailer and moved there. Understand that one of the relatives have it filled with some furnishing that came out of New Orleans, and that to be taken out once the trailer is put in place and attached to the, the trailer as part of the building. I, I do underneath the building provisions, recognize that they have to do some improvements of that structure and to be adequate to be permitted to stay on that part of the trailer. Other than some debris and implements that were there on the, on the properties, those could be cleaned up with a little effort if, with the owner's efforts. Other than that, I ain't got much more to offer than what I just said.
The cars were removed? I remember the cars being an issue last week.
No, there's one, I seen there's one truck that's up on a jack in the back of a residence house. I don't know, maybe the attorney could give us some help on that, whether we got...
Yeah, it got rewired, had moved it up. I got to replace some bearing on it, but it gonna be removed.
What I'm saying is to remove the, an automobile or what authority we have to, to make that.
I just remember there being a comment about a lot of cars on the property last time, and that was part of cleaning the site up or whatever the case was. I didn't know if you observed any of that.
They're, they're there. I don't, I don't know, Mr. Jackson, you might ask if you moved any at all?
Yeah, one of them been moved. We got two more got to be moved. That's it.
I went by, and I mean, I don't see that they're in any condition, I mean, it's almost, I, I don't even, you can even get the thing running, let alone, I mean, I'm just gonna just tow it out of it.
Well, that's, that's what I'm planning on doing. I couldn't tow it.
Play the parent, that's the, you can rebuild the whole thing.
Well, that's what I'm planning on doing. It's empty truck. I'm gonna move it to where I live at. So, just the idea, I couldn't move it because of the bearing, it froze up on it. So, I gotta jack up right now.
And my, my concern is how long is it gonna take you to do all this? Because the trees are down now, they may lay on the ground for...
No, 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 no. We've been working dearly on that. We worked a whole weekend on, on the trees, and also, we wrecked the farm for the, the pad, and the next thing to do is jack the, the trailer up and put the axle on it. We've been working dearly on it. I had other thing, I, we work on my, the house, we moved, we placed the whole roof in two weeks' time. So, we've been working dearly trying to get thing going.
And I appreciate that, but I, you know, I just think this has been a problem for a long time. It shouldn't have taken us a meeting of resubdiving the property for some of this work to have been done. And I just, and concerned it took us to push you to do some of this, is it gonna keep the momentum? And I, I'm...
No, we was already in the process of doing what we're doing. It wasn't that, I think what really brought the problem was because the neighbors, the neighbors just wanna give revenge, and that's what it's all about.
This has nothing to do with the neighbor. This is, I've seen a piece of property, and I'm not, it's not, I mean, if you go up and down that, that road or across the street, the whole corridor, there's a, there's a lot of nice pieces of property, and yours needs to be cleaned up to also enhance the area. And not just chop trees down and put a bunch of trailers. I mean, I don't see if that's gonna be the solution.
Well, the place next to me got a bunch of trailer, but we don't have any trailers on there.
I understand. I mean, you need to, to be a good neighbor to the whole corridor, and not just to the people that may come into that area.
Did I understand you to say that, that, that the trailer is for, the permit is for someone who's unrelated?
No.
Well, as our ordinance would require an immediate family member of that piece of property, I don't think that person is, can be classified as immediate family of property due to the fact that there's already two residents, to my understanding, on that property.
Oh, okay.
The trailer was bought for, for my brother.
Okay, I'm clear now.
O'Neil?
Yes. We need to make a decision on whether it qualifies as a family partition based on the ordinance and not enforcing other ordinances or matters in a parish. It's not a cleanup ordinance. This is the ordinance that you base it on. So, either deny or grant your, your, the family partition based on the ordinance regarding family partitions. And if you wanted to defer the other stuff to another department to look at, but I'm, I'm gonna advise you to handle it based on this ordinance and that's what the requirements are.
One of the things, Laverne, you were talking about someone living in the trailer that's not a, a family member? I mean, this is a, this is six heirs. I mean, normally, estate property is, is done under a family partition, and whoever, they could be renting to somebody. I mean, that's, I think that issue's pretty much taken care of with the fact that it's just the six heirs wanting to divide this family property.
Exactly, and that's my point, that in order to issue a permit, you have to have the property divided. So, we wouldn't able, be able to issue a permit unless it is actually an immediate family. I haven't just, to my understanding, I haven't really had a clarification of that. I understand at one time, it may have not been, and maybe now, indications show that it may be. So, maybe Mr. Robert can clear that up for us.
I don't, I don't understand what you're saying, that, about someone living in the trailer. The trailer, nobody, nobody living in the trailer. The trailer just was bought there, what, about three or four months?
Robert, what I'm talking about is the zoning ordinance that require that the, be immediate family, meaning son, mother, father, daughter, and, of the immediate owner of the property. Now, it's an estate, I don't know how that figures out. The actual owner become the estate. Now, if, I might have to get Lance in here to clarify it up for me. But that's what I'm trying to figure out for you, does it really preclude to the fact that, even as the attorney alluded to, that whether this is part of the, the decision that the, the people need to make here tonight to make that decision for you? I'm saying that I can't issue a permit until the property is subdivided.
I'm understanding that.
For you to move the trailer and get you hooked up.
Right.
That's why I was mentioning that was kind of a catch here. We need to make a, and that's why I'm glad Mr. O'Neil made that point out.
So, you're really in a quandary. No permit, he can't really continue to clear the property.
That has nothing to do with the family partition.
Right.
From what I understand, we need to issue before this commission whether this meets the requirements of a family partition, and that's what this commission needs to decide. The other stuff needs to be handled by another department, but that's what's before this commission.
Well, so, are the, are the six heirs really heirs? O'Neil, are you comfortable with them being heirs?
Yes, I see that from what, from the request, those, that these are the six children of the person who owned the property.
Alice Jackson. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Based on legal advice, I'm gonna move for approval.
I second.
I have a motion to approve...
Michael, someone needed to speak.
Someone else?
That's okay. Excuse me.
Yeah. I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas, seconded by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition? Item 14B, Patrick L. Rusell Property, lots A-2A and A-2B.
James Faug, representing Earls and Associates, on the following family partition. The servitude of passage has been changed to forty-foot servitude of passage all throughout the lots A-1 and A-2-A. Asking the committee for approval.
Comments or questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Sanjay, you have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Sanjay, you, you have a plat that shows forty-foot servitude?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm right here.
Yeah, Mr. Sanjay, you've seen this?
And your question is?
I'm sorry?
And your question is?
Well, if you haven't had a chance to review it...
Well, I'm looking at it now. Is the issue whether or not he's showing forty feet of servitude?
That may have been the open issue at the last one, but I, I think that you, don't you, I mean, I would, I would think that you would need a reasonable period of time to review this document, make sure it's, there's no other changes.
Tell me what the issue is, and I'll tell you whether I need more time or not.
You just received this document, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Are you comfortable that there are no other modifications or changes on this document?
Well, what was the issue last time, is my question.
The thirty-foot servitude of passage.
Thirty-foot servitude.
We changed it to forty.
If the question is whether or not he's providing forty feet of servitude, I'm looking at the plat, yes, he's providing it. If that is the only issue.
Where the vicinity map isn't, isn't correct. It's, this property's closer to the, the Northerly Road, up between D and K Lane and...
That's D and K Lane. It has been, D and K Lane right here.
Comments or questions from the commission?
Michael, is it just as simple as moving that line? I mean, is it, is there more that needs to be looked at here?
You're talking about the servitude?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just that simple. I mean, if y'all wanted a forty-foot servitude, that's what he's depicting there.
Do you have any other issues in the plat that you want to take time to review?
Do I?
Yeah.
No, I'm basing on the letter. We previously said that, that the, the required servitude should have been forty feet, so if that's the only comment we had before that wasn't addressed, I'm not sure that I need additional time.
Vicinity map? You okay with that?
Uh, he, he can, I mean, he can correct that prior to his signature.
Yeah, not a problem.
If that's part of the motion.
All right, well, I, I move to approve with a condition that he corrects the vicinity map... map prior to execution.
Second. I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas, seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition? Motion passes.
Thank you. Just as a comment, there was, there was an article in a paper today where the courts in Lafayette ruled that if you don't act on a plat within sixty days, it's approved. Just to let you know, that's where I am. Yep.
Sixteen days.
A gentle nudge, right? You, you were giving us a gentle nudge. Appreciate that.
Item fourteen C, the Ernest J. Savoy property, lots one and two.
Hello, I'm Todd Savoy. Seeking to, uh, get a reapproval on this, uh, map. It was approved in, uh, two thousand. Uh, and I guess we hit, got hit with the ninety-day rule that we just learned about. And we're just trying, we updated the map to the new servitudes, and just trying to get a reapproval on it, to get everything signed over.
Questions or comments from the commission?
You're gonna make the ninety days this time?
Yes, I got everything straight right now, ready to go.
Mr. Sanji, you, did you have a chance to look at this plat to see if it, just to double-check?
I don't think we did a review. Would we have done a review, Charles? I don't see a le, I don't see the letter, because we, we would've, it was... It was previously approved.
Rea, all right. No, uh, no comments or questions from the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Steve Barrow, seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Uh, before we adjourn, I have a non i, non-item, old business I'd like to bring up.
We're not ready to adjourn, we have one more item under old business. Item D.
Yes, I'm sorry.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna leave the, uh, Mr. Sanji without the opportunity to address the commission on the, uh, status report on traffic improvements for entrance to Pelican Point subdivision?
This is really, I, I really need some direction from the commission. There was a bond, uh, a surety bond posted, uh, for these traffic improvements. The bond expires on June seventeenth of two thousand and six. The work won't be completed in that time. Um, so...
What's our options?
Well, my suggestion is you file suit to enforce the bond, 'cause they said it can get the work completed in a hundred and twenty days. Uh, under the Louisiana Code of Civil Procedure, I can withhold service for ninety days. That gives them plenty of time to get their project done, and if it's not, serve them in fo, in, uh, forfeit the bond.
Would it be a signal, traffic signal?
Yes.
When DOT comes through, they're like, relocate?
I don't know anything about that. They, this is what they, they agreed to pu, uh, post this bond and have that signal put up, but the bond expires on June seventeenth of two thousand and six. When the bond expires, we, we have an issue. That's why the bond's posted.
You, would, you need a, an action from the commission?
Yeah, I'm asking the board, would, direct me what y'all want me to do.
Well, O'Neil, you're our legal expert.
Well, you want me to file a lawsuit?
You know, you know, you know the best, so I'm gonna make a recommendation to go with, uh, with whatever legal...
I'll make that as a motion, form of a motion.
Second. Okay, I have a motion to approve, uh, Mr. Parenton's request to, to enforce the bond, uh, by Mike Bardwell.
It goes, you said a hundred and twenty days, or ninety days? How much time do they have to get this finished?
Based on the stuff that Michael's, Michael has given us, they said they can award the bids on April fourteenth, and, and, uh, should take them a hundred and twenty days to finish the project. The problem we have is the bond, they may be able to finish that within the time that bond expires, but I don't want the bond to expire. That's why some, I can withhold service for ninety days, and I'm, I'm gonna file suit, send them a letter and say I'm gonna withhold service for ninety days. If your project's not completed in a hundred and twenty days, I'm gonna forfeit your bond. That's what I've done on, in other matters, and it works.
All right, then, I have a motion to approve Mr. Legal, legal counsel proceeding that he sees fit with this bond issue, by Mike Bardwell, seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition? Motion passes.
I saw you slightly said adjourn, that's why I jumped. Under old business, um... Do we have, have we received anything from Oak Plaza Shopping Center? We approved it a couple of months ago with a condition that they addressed the one outstanding minor engineering issue. Mr. Sanji?
No.
Then, I would like to recommend to the commission that we, or I'd like to motion that we reconsider the matter and, and ask legal counsel, how do we, do we put it back on the agenda? Okay, then I would move that we reconsider the approval, put it back on the agenda for next month.
I'll second that. Have a motion to place Oak Plaza Shopping Center back on the agenda for the May meeting by Julio Dumas, seconded by Michael Bardwell. Is there any opposition? Motion passes.
Julio, do you remember what the, uh, what the outstanding refreshment member, do you remember?
Detention fine.
It, they had, they had some drainage issue connecting one part of the shopping center to the other.
They deferred that a couple times, it seemed like it went on for...
They pulled it.
They forward it? It went on for years. Went on for a few months. All right, years.
Mr. Chair?
At this, unless you have something further, I was gonna go ahead and let item fifteen come up and entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the, uh, planning and, planning commission meeting.
Have a motion by Mr. Courtwright to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Bardwell. Is there any opposition? Motion passes.